Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in 10 minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in 5 minutes.
If I could have everybody's attention for a second. It's 9:28, so I'm just giving the 2 minute warning.
Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in 2 minutes.
All right. It is 9:31. Everybody could find a seat. It's good to see a full house here this morning. There's still people that need a seat. If you have a seat next to you, raise your hand or stand up and... I would just like to welcome everybody. I'd like to welcome the new council members here before we get started. And just before I call the meeting to order, I'll just kind of let you know the layout of the day. We're going to swear five new members, four new members in and one re-elected member. We do have some business today that we'll take care of, but we'll do the swearing-in ceremony first. It's a very special day for these newly-elected and re-elected council members. Glad to see their family and friends here and we'll invite you to participate during the ceremony as the council member wishes. So with that, we will call the January 5th, 2023 meeting to order at 9:33. And as is our tradition, we will start with an invocation and then the pledge of allegiance. So I'll ask you to stand in just a minute. I just... Very good. Before I do that, I just want to say that the invocation is open to any faith group. If your faith group would like to participate in it, just send an email to kgreen@volusia.org. And she will... This is Kay Green over there. But just send her an email and she'll let you know all the particulars, what you need to do, and we would welcome you here. This morning, we have Pastor Tommy Clayton from Grace Life Church, meeting in Deltona at the Deltona High School. Tommy, thank you for coming. If everybody would please stand if you care to.
It's an honor to be here. Please join me in a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for a new year. Thank you for your mercies and your grace that brought us this far. Thank you for all the opportunities that this year presents. I thank you for the new faces that are here at this council and the one returning. Pray that they would find a friendly and welcome reception. Pray that their views, their insights, their wisdom and experience, Lord, would be sought after. Grateful for the men and women who serve our city, our county. We know, Lord, that we need wisdom and that you provide it. I pray that these men and women would be humble. They would serve with honesty, with openness, with integrity. They would stand up for justice. They would welcome the views and the opinions of those that they're serving. Thank you that you have put them in this position, God, and we just ask for your help this year. Ask for your protection. I pray for protection over them, their families. If they're married and have children over those as well, may they serve you honorably. We ask these things in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Carissa, would you call the brand-new role?
Mr. Dempsey.
Get your mic on.
It was broken earlier. Now it's working.
Mr. Dempsey.
What? Here.
Oh, you're gonna be fun.
Mr. Johansson.
Here.
Mr. Ken.
Here.
Mr. Reinhardt.
Here.
Mr. Robbins.
Here.
Mr. Santiago.
Mr. Brower.
Here.
And we do have a quorum. Mr. Santiago will not be here this meeting or the following meeting, I understand. So we will wait till he returns to have our group picture in the back. So we'll dispense with that this morning. If, please, it's the council, we normally start with public participation to hear from our constituents first, and we will do that. We don't have many, we have a few. First is our friend Barb Gertman. And she's bringing her sidekick, Billy Wheeler.
And that wasn't planned.
No, it wasn't.
Okay. But good morning to the new council. I'm basically here to say, "Welcome." It matters that we support and represent our community in the best way forward. And it's important that our community know that our prior council is also in support. So I want Mr. Dempsey to know that I'm here. I'm here for you. Anything that I can do to help make Volusia better and to make District 1 better, I'm here in support of that. And know that I'm gonna be looking to you to also help me move a number of the community initiatives forward. Because our community needs advocates and I am one of those. To the rest of the council, to the new members, same thing. To the chair, I'm here. And I know how difficult this job is, so know that I don't take it for granted. And it matters to me and that's why I stand here before you and the public to let them know that I don't go anywhere. I came with purpose and I stand with purpose.
I, since I didn't sign up, I just joined with her. As always, she says everything perfectly, but I welcome you all and I want you all to know that you have my total support. I'm anxious to see what you all do and I hope you come together as a team and look out what's best for Volusia County. Matt, I left you my little soldiers that was given to me. One was given to me on my first day. I have no idea who left it for me. And the second one was given to me on my second election and I left them with Matt, so you're in good hands. And as I told him, I will tell all of you, I'm his nagavator. So I'll be on the outside as your mother hen if ever, if ever I can do anything. Staff, love you all. Thank you so much. Thank you for the opportunity to serve and now it's all in good hands. Thank you.
Billy, I always thought it was Ed Kelly that gave you those soldiers. Ed is here this morning if he'd like to take responsibility for that.
I don't think he did.
Okay.
So just want to say thank you again. I will be staying for the swearing-in. I believe Senator Scott is here and we're going to make some enro... Try to make some enro's there for Volusia County. So I'll be leaving, but God bless and thank you all.
Thank you. Skip White.
Good morning. Skip White, 48, 85, South Atlantic, Ponce Inlet, Florida. My wife Jane and I live on a beach in Ponce Inlet. We, like everyone living on the beach in Volusia County, have suffered from major dune loss over the past several years, more than others. I'm not here today to point fingers in reverse, but wanted to try to point fingers in the future. We feel like we're at a critical state with our beaches and dunes. They're currently on life support. The first step in the process needs to start tomorrow, is dune replenishment, re-nourishment. But the second step, the process of dune beach management restoration program. Volusia County does not have one at this time. What is a dune beach maintenance program? Let me quickly share with you what we've found. We have researched many counties in the state of Florida and other states across the United States and have found excellent examples like Corpus... Excuse me, like Cape Charles, Virginia and Corpus Christi, Texas. This is a step-by-step, day-by-day, week-by-week, month-by-month yearly plan. The plan is to re-nourishment our beaches. We will... We need to do this, revitalize these programs, just like the programs that the state requires in the state law. All programs were viewed and approved by Army Corps of Engineers, Department of Environmental Protection, and the state for which they were adopted. I have a couple examples quickly. This is actually the one from Cape Charles, Virginia, 43 pages. It is very detailed. It goes from sand replenishment, re-nourishment, to actually planting plants that we all seem to forget about at some time. The thing that stuck out to me the most, on page 12, they changed the comp plan. What they did, they changed the comp plan to help to support the dune maintenance program. And their words in the comp plan. The comp plan states that is utmost importance that Cape Charles maintains its beaches for future safety and benefit of citizens. That's key point is the comp plan. Corpus Christi, Texas, the reason I chose that one. They have seven and a half miles of driving on the beach. They conduct dune maintenance programs every single day. The challenge they have that we have versus their plan, their state allows for sand scraping. Sand scraping is not allowed in the state of Florida. I've tried. I've asked all the way up to DEP with simple projects, but to no avail. The last piece I have, rumor has it that Volusia County is working on a 50-year program. Rumor. But what about short-term, mid-term, and long-term for our beaches and dune systems? Please communicate any plans you might have for our mayor, Lois Perinsky, so she can share with the citizens of Ponce Inlet. Please, the last piece I have. Please consider these suggestions to save our beaches, our most beloved natural resource. Stop trying to add additional activities that will only continue to put stress on the beaches and focus all of our efforts on saving our dunes. Thank you.
Skip, I have your phone number and your email. I'm gonna contact you. I would like you to be part of the process for this. You've got good information. This is an important topic. I'll let you know that the staff and I met yesterday. This was one of the topics that we discussed and they are fast-forwarding plans with, fingers crossed, with the Army Corps. And you know, it's a tough process, working between the state and the federal government. But I will contact you. Thank you for bringing this information to our attention.
Absolutely. And I actually did leave copies of this in case I ran out of my 3 minutes. So she said that she would put on y'all's desk in case it didn't get finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Walker.
Good morning. My name's Tom Walker and the subject I'd like to be talking about is changing the way that we use fuel or the type of fuel that we can use. And hydrogen comes to mind. And I was researching using hydrogen fuel as a viable entity. And this information comes from the Department of, US Department of Energy. It's not some conspiracy theory and it uses wastewater to produce hydrogen. When you add bacteria and electric current to a wastewater, it can produce hydrogen. Hydrogen, if you combine it with oxygen, produces water, which is a non-polluting, non-greenhouse gas. The point that I'm really trying to get at is that the wastewater plant that is being expanded down into Berry is using the same old thing that we've been using for 100 years. And my idea is to take the wastewater, let the settlement of the solids as much as possible, and distill the... and distill the, uh, the liquid part from the hydrogen that could produce from the wastewater itself. So it'd go full circle. It would, uh, produce pure water without any chemicals. It would eliminate any pharmaceutical residue, which is very difficult to get out of any kind of wastewater. It can only be used for irrigation. And it would reduce the amount of water that's drawn from the aquifer. Plus, it would not produce any kind of pollution. So you're taking a liability of wastewater and turning it into an asset, which can be used. The other thing is, uh, changing, uh, cars to all-electric, or trying to buy electric cars is not really feasible at this point, because you can't produce enough electricity. Millions of cars on the road using gasoline could not overnight be transferred to electric. California had problems this last summer. They asked people with EVs not to use, not to charge their cars because there was a lack of electricity. The, uh, the sabotage we've had on power stations proves that it's a very, you know, very tenuous situation trying to get our electric transmitted. But if you could produce hydrogen and use it in electric cars, you would get a whole, and to gasoline cars, you could produce a whole new industry, transferring, uh, gasoline over to hydrogen cars. The car, the trucks that deliver propane run on propane. They don't run on liquid gas. So it, uh, it would take some ingenuity, but we can put a man on a moon. We can do, certainly do this. So my idea, I'd like to talk to Christine Martin. She's the person, the doctor, PhD, that's in charge of the, well, water plant expansion down in DeBerry. Thank you for your help, and if you can give me any help, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. I will send you some information, Tom. There's a company I want you to look up, called Bo Max, B-O-M-A-X, run by a nuclear chemist right here in Deland. Their company is in Sanford. We need them here in, in Volusia County. But they are actually producing, um, fuel cells with hydrogen for cars, so we'll... Yeah. This actually uses algae, but, it actually uses algae, but we'll, we'll talk about it. Yes. Thank you, sir. Lisa Landis?
Hello, I am Lisa A. Bain Landis, resident on and off of Florida since 1977. You can also find me, Lowlady, D-L-O-L-A-D-Y, on the internet. I didn't know what I was going to, and I could not gear down, so I'm going to ask my God to speak my word, that it may be of impact to you. I was here at the last meeting and had spoke about the opioid crisis and getting treatment, and I am very firm on that, because I've already lost one son, and I do not want to lose another one. The criminal justice system needs reform. That is a fact. Stanford Prison Experiment states that there is abuse of power. We know that there is abuse of power. Our elected officials need to be reminded they are not put in office to make money. They are put in office to serve the people. In other words, you, the affected of, or of, elected officials, affected, obviously, work for the people, we the people. So I've heard some really good, important information that we the people are speaking to our elected officials to act upon. I've been traveling the past year and put on 21,000 miles on my car with my animals, and I am educating the people of our First Amendment. You will see our First Amendment, freedom of religion, freedom of speech, freedom of press, freedom to assemble, and our right to redress our government for grievances who work for we the people. So do not judge a book by its cover. We have travelers who have been criminalized by our criminal justice system, and this needs to stop. Foreign countries should not profit on the people who have loved ones behind bars, who cannot afford a bond to get out. They are forced to live behind bars until they are proven guilty, which is a crime in itself. So I wish those of you well. I hope those of you are in here for the right reason, and for those who aren't, planetarily, Pluto's gonna kick your butt. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. John Nicholson?
Good morning. My name is John Nicholson. I live in Daytona Beach on the beachside. Some of you may have seen me occasionally come to the county council, and occasionally I speak, and normally, Jeff cringes whenever I walk to the podium. But I'm here just to say, welcome. You will see me throughout the year. There's no, um, doubt that I loved the last council. There are five new ones. There will be a learning curve. I wish you well on that. We really cannot afford a learning curve right now, but we have to deal with it. Our economy's in the toilet, getting worse. We just suffered two terrible storms. You guys got a lot to do. I wish you well, and yes, Jeff, this is your. Good day.
Thank you, John, and I never cringe when you come. Either time, the beginning of the meeting or the last of the meeting. Okay, thank you for all who participated. We, we welcome public participation. You are our employers, so we need to hear from you. Now we will move to, for the, uh, point of business that most of you are here for, the swearing-in, and just to give you some background before anybody gets up, we have the Honorable Judge Angela A. Dempsey, County Judge of Seventh Judicial Circuit, will be swearing-in each member. In just a minute, I'll ask, uh, Angela to come forward. We're going to start with the at-large member, and then just go down in order, District 1, 2, 3, and 4. I would just ask every council member, I'll, I'll start with, with you, Mr. Johansson. Before you go down, if you would just let us know, I would like for each member to be able to include as much of your family as you would like. If you have somebody that's gonna hold Bible for you, just call them forward, and if you have other family members that you want to come for that, or if you want them to come for your picture afterwards, your choice. I want this to be special for you and run the way that each one of you are looking forward to it. We'll start with you, um, Judge Dempsey. He would come to the podium, and Jake Johansson, um, being sworn in as the at-large member. Check.
Is it long enough, David? Perfect. All right, thanks.
Raise your right. Mike?
Michael, Jake Johansson.
Solemnly.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will protect
that I will support, protect, defend
the Constitution
of government of the United States. And
qualified
that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the State of Florida. And I will well faithfully perform the duties of Volusia County Council District at large of which I am now about to enter. So help God.
Come on back. Johansson.
We're just gonna get one with all of council. Yes. There we go. Please end.
Okay, council, take a big step that way.
That's right, one more.
Another big step.
There you go.
Another big step.
There we go.
Okay, you're good.
Okay, one more here.
And now we're clear this area, so the guys back, get it.
Okay, now we'll move to the District 1 member, Don Dempsey, and I believe you know the judge.
Little girl, come forward. Yeah, that's
Rachel Donald Don Dempsey solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the state of Florida. That I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state of Florida. And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of Volusia County Council District which I am now about to enter. So help
Okay, let's get it. Here, you go that way. Let's see. Yeah, go that a little, that, no, that way. Yeah, that's it. A little bit more that way. Yeah, okay. I see ya. We're gonna clear the middle.
Okay, next we have Matt Reinhardt, and whoever's gonna meet Matt down here.
Please repeat after me. I, Matt.
I, Matthew Matt Reinhardt.
Solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend
That I will support, protect, and defend.
the Constitution and government of the United States.
the Constitution and government of the United States.
and of the state of Florida.
and of the state of Florida.
that I am duly qualified to hold office.
that I am duly qualified to hold office.
under the Constitution of the state of Florida.
under the Constitution of the state of Florida.
and that I will well and faithfully perform
and that I will well and faithfully perform
the duties of Volusia County Council District 2.
the duties of Volusia County Council District 2.
on which I am now about to enter.
on which I am now about to enter.
so help
so help me God.
Okay, everybody, way down here. Bottom row, take another step that way.
Little girl in the center here.
That's a better idea, yes.
Bring her in. Get in close.
Okay, next we have re-elected county council member from District Three, Danny Robbins.
Repeat after me. I, Daniel Danny Robbins.
I, Daniel Danny Robbins.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
Constitution, government, the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of.
That I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution.
That I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution.
Of the state of Florida.
Of the state of Florida.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
I will well faithfully perform.
The duties of Volusia County Council District Three.
The duties of Volusia County Council District Three.
On which I am now about to enter.
Which I am now about.
So help.
So help God.
Everybody over here. That's good. Oh, county council, one step that.
And finally, we have District Four County Council, uh, member Troy Kent.
And if my wife Heather and my mother and father and Wyatt could come on up.
Repeat after me. I, Troy Kent.
I, Troy Kent.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the government of the United States.
Constitution and the government of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State of Florida.
Under the Constitution of the State of Florida.
That I will well and faithfully perform.
That I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of Volusia County Council District Four.
The duties Volusia County Council District Four.
On which I am now about to enter.
Which now about.
So help me.
So.
County council that way. Uh. This is good. Yeah, okay. All right.
Judge Dempsey, thank you very much. Well done. And we appreciate you taking time from your court to be here and making this a memorable occasion for each of the, the new members. Before we, uh, continue on with some of the business of the day of setting up the new council, I wanted to give each one of the members a chance to make some comments, um, as they look down the road at the year ahead. And to do that, we'll start with, um, District One and just go down the list, one, two, three, four. Um, and then, uh, at large and the chair. So, um, sorry, Don, but you have to go first.
Um. Am I doing good? Uh. I'd like to thank everybody for coming. I'd like to thank for, uh, thank you all for, uh, voting me into office. It was, uh, truly a miracle that I got elected. Seeing as how I did virtually no campaigning and no fundraising of any kind, but yet I'm here through, I believe, divine appointment. So I would just like to thank, uh, my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for putting me here. And I hope I do him right. I want to thank my pastor, Slade Rickles, for being here today. Uh, don't know where he went, but he wanted to be in here to support me. Like to thank my beautiful wife, uh, for swearing me in. Uh, I'd like to thank my son Grayson and my daughter Elizabeth for being here. And, uh, I just hope I don't let anybody down. Promise you that I'll pray for wisdom before any decision. Thank you all for.
District Two, Matt Reinhardt.
Thank you. Um, I did prepare a canned speech, so I'm sorry. We took some time writing it, but I want to make sure I got it right. Um. Most of you who don't know me, yes, I was the unknown candidate in the, uh, in the November elections, um, but the voters in District Two and my supporters, uh, this is no longer the case. I've been a resident in this county for over fifty-two years, uh, living on both sides of the county, Cat Atwood. And I have roots here, uh, and a love for our county. And my desire to run, that's the reason why. I was recently reflecting, uh, on some events that brought me to this day that forced me to step out of my comfort zone. Everything from, uh, praying about my decision to run for office to winning the election and everything in between. I have to admit, I have found a newfound respect, uh, for anybody that wants to, to do this. Uh, it's not an easy process and it's definitely not for the faint of hearts. I'll never forget the first speech I gave, um, kinda like right now. I was really nervous. And yes, this is coming from a guy that, uh, used to speak to two hundred or plus people in a room. Of course, they didn't have the luxury of leaving the room. So, uh, but of course, uh, all kidding aside, I realized, uh, after that speech, I was, I was doing something that was much larger than me. I had given my entire adult life to serving and protecting the citizens of Volusia County. And I truly, uh, and I realized I truly wanted to continue that service just in a different capacity. When I think of how, uh, I had to step out of my comfort zone, it was my beautiful wife Stephanie, um, that shared something or brought it something to my attention. She shared a Christian song, uh, that fit the situation best, and the song is called Voice of Truth by Casting Crowns. It's played several times in the local, uh, Z eighty-eight point three, and by the way, that, that radio stays set on that channel all day, trust me. Oh, what I would like, and the lyrics go, say it best, oh, what I would do, uh, to have that kind of faith it takes to climb out of the boat I'm in, to step out of my comfort zone. God tells us that not to be afraid, that it is for his glory, and I will tell you, there are no truer words spoken. I have stepped out of the boat during this process and kept my eyes on the Lord because I had many hurdles to overcome, uh, and we suffered a huge loss during the, the process of this campaign with the loss of my mother, um, probably about a week before the election. I wish, you know, she could be here right now. Um, I'm sure she's looking down. Without my faith and love and prayers, uh, of my wife Stephanie, my family, who some are here, my son didn't make it, he is grounded. So this is, if this is on the news, definitely get that to him, that information. So my wife had to wear several hats from campaign manager, campaign treasurer, web designer, and so on, but, uh, we were the unknown. We were the underdog and, uh, her talents made it possible for me to transfer from the warden to the councilman. I also want to thank all my family, my supporters, and all the friendships I formed, uh, during my campaign from the people who made the phone calls, sent emails, waved signs to those, uh, who signed checks. I could not have done this without your faith and belief, uh, in me and your support, uh, is never going to be forgotten. I ensure, uh, I want to ensure also that I thank the city of New Smyrna Beach as well, um, because without them, I, I couldn't be here as well, and I appreciate you. And for my, my brethren back there in the back for, from V C D C, I asked the question, is there anybody left at the jail or New Smyrna? So I appreciate the support. They did not reply. They don't want to talk about it. I, I started working as a co-compliance offer officer for the city of New Smyrna Beach, and I remember sitting down, having that conversation with that leadership and telling them, uh, this is what I want to do and, and why. And they kept on with that unwavering support right from day one, right to the very end. And my goal was to continue to, uh, stay working for them, uh, and do this as well, but, uh, in light of recent events, um, with what has happened with the storms, um, the desire and the need, uh, is far greater than that. So my attention had to be diverted to, uh, a bigger, bigger project. So. And it was exciting. We had a lot of things that we wanted to accomplish. But, uh, those are on the, uh, on the back burner for right now because we have a big, big project to, to help the citizens, uh, over on the coast. And, and I want you to know that, uh, we'll be working on it hard right from day one. Lastly, um, uh, again, I thank my wife and my family, uh, and my granddaughter. You guys see her down there? Hi, Ryan. So, and I'm sorry, I, I went a little bit longer than Don, so. But thank you very much. I appreciate your support so much.
We'll have to find out who wrote Don's speech. Brings us to District Three, Councilman Danny Robbins.
I might beat you here, Matt. I just want to say good morning, friends, family, members of council, residents of Volusia County. Uh, it has truly been an honor to stand before you and at your service for the last two years, and even in greater honor to stand before you for yet another four. Despite many challenges that we have faced, we've made tremendous progress, and I could not be more excited to see what our future holds. As we begin this morning, I'd ask to like, please give our thoughts with the extraordinary Volutions who recently experienced the wrath of Hurricanes Ian and Nicole. Please keep our thoughts and prayers with the brave men and women who defend this great nation and continue to give strength to our first responders as they are the ones who defend us so tirelessly here at home. I'd also like to thank each one of our municipalities and those who continue to work closely with our state and federal partners who have recently spared no effort to save property and to save life. While both hurricanes were fierce, the damage and casualties were far less, and I attribute that to the phenomenal work from Volusia County staff and the resiliency of our residents. Getting started, I want to say thank you to my past colleagues, some of which are here in the audience today for your years and years of service to this community. And congratulations to the newcomers who overwhelmingly made wins across the boards who successfully rewrote the Volusia County political map. I wanted to congratulate all of you and thank everyone who volunteered and to say thank you to the citizens who supported each and every one of us up here by using your feet on Election Day. It is true, when you work hard, when you're responsive, when you're honest, and when you have a good record to run on, it's a whole lot easier to run a campaign. And I personally would not be able to see a lot of my accomplishments that we saw without the citizens and the staff, staff members, excuse me, that have worked so hard to support my values and my agenda. And to the people that supported me that didn't before, thank you. Really, thank you. I am truly honored to have earned your trust and support over the last two years. One person I will single out, uh, most definitely is my other half, Michelle. Uh, she is not only my best friend, she's a tremendous mom to my son, uh, Carson, and our daughter Reagan. I just wanted to thank her for her unwavering support, not fifty percent of the time, absolutely one hundred percent of the time. And thank you to my family, mom, dad, Aaron, my brother who cannot be here, Dennis, and Michelle, Dale, uh, Nikki, and Yancy McDonald, Nick, Nick Burrow, Steve Loy, and everyone else who's been there, uh, since the beginning. But thank you all for your unconditional support in everything we do is, is truly a team effort. Typical fashion, getting long-winded. The election was one for the record books. Volutions made it clear by choosing progress over perfidy, stewardship over subjugation, and experience over expedience. I'm grateful to these voters for they have demonstrated what they truly seek in us as elected officials. They made it clear they are not interested in ideas that cater to a select few. They made it clear that they did not want my way or the highway politics. They made it clear that they wanted open debate on issues of the day and for us to work with one another and to find common ground. Now, none of you are going to be surprised, but my whole life, people have said that I'm too outspoken. Well, folks, it's true. I, like you, have the right to remain silent. I just don't have the ability. I'm just being me, and I've come to realize because of that, I will never quite fit in, but that's okay. Politics stands alone when it comes to, I use still basic words, stupidity. It's painful. Like me when you hear regulations will strengthen our economy, like putting more bureaucracy in place somehow equals less government. And also like believing money somehow grows on trees. But I'm an optimistic guy and I still have hope. Because I learned on this job that clams, believe it or not, have survived on this planet for more than five hundred million years without a brain. In my. In my first two years, I've battled my fair slick politicians. Head on by choosing facts over fear. We've stood our ground when it comes to less regulation and truly less government in Volusia County. And with your help, we are able to be the wall they hit every single time. By keeping our sanity in District Three, it allowed us to not only make promises to the people of Volusia County, but it allowed us to keep them, most importantly. And I believe I have delivered on those promises. Violent crime is. Violent crime is surging across America. In the last few years, we have witnessed weak leaders blame the police. You can bet your bottom dollar, I blame the criminals. That is why I voted for record funding for our first responders and not to defund them. That is also why I helped tailor inmate policy, which moved tax burdens from our citizens and put them right back on the criminals, exactly where they belong. Day in and day out, I have respected our taxpayers by rejecting bad policy and have defended our property rights every step of the way. Going forward, the pressure for socialism is sweeping across this great country, but I am here today to tell you that I refuse to abandon the brave men and women who have died defending our American principles, the American values, and the American dream. This country was founded on liberty, independence, and the pursuit of happiness, not government control, coercion, and domination. I believe we do not worship elected officials anywhere, and we do not worship government. We worship God. We are born free, and by God, we will live free. Where Volusia County goes from here will be defined by our vision, and our persistence, and our grit. Together, we can cement our future by encouraging each other to chase our wildest dreams, no matter what the critics and bloggers say. There's a rule in life, whether you agree with it or not, you're either growing or you're dying. A tree is either growing or it's dying, the same with grass, the same with a relationship, the same with a council, and us as individuals. It has nothing to do with age. My good friend Jake Johansson's birthday candles cost more than his cake. But it has everything to do with, are we trying to get better, and are we pushing forward? Each of us are going to experience difficulties. It's just a part of life. But when you experience difficulties, something I learned is to be careful who you tell. Did you know 90% of the people don't care? And the other 10% are glad you got them? So be very careful who you tell, and do everything to the best of your abilities with the time allotted, because at the end of the day, that's all you can do. Not everyone can be the best star quarterback, not everybody can be the best, but we can be the best that we can be. And if you fail, you have the right to fail. That is what's so great about this country. But you do not have the right to cause other people to fail, because you did not do everything in your power and ability, or to the best of your ability. In closing, Coach Lou Holtz said, "Life doesn't have to be complicated." He said, "There are only seven colors in the rainbow." Look what Michelangelo did with those seven colors. He said, "There's only seven musical notes." Look what Beethoven did with those seven musical notes. He said, "There's only 10 numbers." Look what Bernie Madoff did with those 10 numbers. Now, don't do what Bernie did, but his point was to keep life simple. Things don't have to be so complicated. But folks, we all work hard. Enjoy the fruits of your labor. Enjoy life, because often we forget how short it really is, and that every single day here with each other is indeed a blessing. Life is great in Volusia County, and it is my honor to help keep fight, to help stay in the fight and keep it that way. Thank you all for coming out today and supporting us. Thank you for the support in District Three. God bless you guys. God bless Volusia County. Thank you guys so much.
And that brings us to District Four, County Councilman Troy Kent.
Thank you, Chairman. Before I get started with my comments, just a point of clarification, either from the attorney or you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't see on the agenda, do we have a second bite at the apple here, where we may have some requests for staff at the end of the meeting? Or is this our one and only time that we're going to talk?
It is not your one and only time. At the end of the meeting, we will have comments from anybody that wants them, any county council member.
That's great. I didn't see that. I just wanted to make sure before I got started, so thank you very much for that. Volusia County, what an absolute pleasure and joy it is to be in front of you this morning. I am humbled by the support in District Four, in our beautiful county. I am appreciative of the voters for putting me here, and I heard a speaker say it earlier, and I've never forgotten, you know, who the real bosses are. And those are the taxpayers and residents of Volusia County. That's who we answer to, your elected officials, elected officials. I want to start by thanking my family. I want to, my wife Heather, her unwavering support during these 19 years, my 19 in Ormond Beach, and now starting my first year in Volusia County, my son Wyatt, who's here, my daughter Gabby, and son-in-law Tim, and our grandson Hudson, who couldn't be here today, my mother and father, you know, you're the bedrock of the family, and I love you all very, very much. My friends that helped me on the campaign, and those that are here today, Rick and Sheila Minor, are just unbelievable. Thank you very much. Chairman, former Chairman Ed Kelly and Mary Margaret, amazing people. Mike Scudero, you the man. Travis Sargent, Zone Two, City Commissioner in the city of Ormond Beach. I mean, just so excited to continue to watch the great things that you're doing as well. And this Fred Hane, where's Fred? Is he still here? Fred, thank you for your help and your support. Rick Lovell, who's not here. Rick's actually been with me from the first day, so Rick Lovell, thank you for your support. To my fellow council members, this is exciting. Myself and Councilman Reinhart, we have a two-year term. So you're going to find out very quickly with me, Mr. Reinhart actually saying, sort of saying a little bit of a lyric of a song, I'm not going to do that, but anybody that knows the movie Smokey and the Bandit, and Jerry Reed, "We got a long way to go and a short time to get there," that's this guy. I will start today trying to make this county better, and you'll hear that later on, so I won't get too deep into that right now. During my time as a City Commissioner, I held a monthly meeting called Coffee with Commissioner Kent. I did it at my house, I did it every month. It was the first Monday of every month, and it was open dialogue for my constituents to tell me what they thought, what was important to them, what they wanted to see. I'm pleased to tell you, this will continue in the county. Couple of changes. It will not be at my home, it will not be once a month, but it will be quarterly, and I have called it District Four Dialogue. We will meet four different locations throughout the year quarterly. We will meet in Ormond Beach, Ormond by the Sea, Holly Hill, and Daytona Beach. At the next meeting, I will tell you the first date of when that's going to happen. I will also let you know the first location. Some of the goals that I am going to tackle head-on, starting today, I'm going to fix the infrastructure failures that this county has had on LPGA Boulevard, and also in Ormond Beach, Timber Creek Road and Airport Road. I'm going to get all Volusia County residents to the best of my ability, and hopefully I can get some support from these great gentlemen up here, but I want you back on your beach ASAP, and I want you driving on it for free. I haven't hid this, I'm not just coming out with new things, I've been talking about this for months, actually years, but I want that beach open for you. It's our biggest and best asset in Volusia County, and I'm passionate about it. I had a wonderful meeting with the Director of the Ocean Center, Tim, and I am excited that we are going to get events in our town that we want to attend back at the Ocean Center. I can't stand it that I have to take my family to St. Augustine Amphitheater or the Amway Arena to go to an event that we want to attend. Mr. Rektinwald, thank you. We had some very healthy discussions about that, and I appreciate your support as well with that. I will continue to fight and keep short-term rentals out of your neighborhoods. You want to make hotel money? I want you to make hotel money. Just go buy a hotel, okay? Don't put it in my backyard where we have to deal with the nonsense day in and day out. I'm going to be an advocate for you, or maybe against you, if you want them. I want to stop sending our residents to Flagler County to bring their dogs to a dog-friendly area of the beach. This is low-hanging fruit that I'm hoping to tackle at the end of this meeting today. But wherever you live in the county, unless, and I saw the mayor of Ponce Inlet here, but unless you live in Ponce Inlet, you know, there's a section in Ponce Inlet where you can bring your dog to the beach. But we can tackle this with a common sense approach and solve this problem in a way that it is clean, and healthy, and fun, and limited access in areas, but we should be doing that for our residents, and I'm going to help lead the way for that. I want to make sure, by the way, and just to give you a little bit more on that, I want to make sure that each of these beachside communities, Ormond by the Sea, Ormond Beach, Daytona Beach, Daytona Beach Shores, Ponce Inlet, and New Smyrna, and my idea, I'm sure we'll talk about it down the road, but my idea is that each one of those beachside communities will have one 100-yard section where you may bring your dog on a leash. There will be signage, there will be trash cans, there will be bags. We will have a lifeguard stationed at each one of those, so that if somebody in our county or one of our visitors isn't following our rules, we're going to have a healthy conversation with them and let them know what our rules are. And if they continue to not follow them, they will be fined, and then they will be banned. But we have too many dog lovers in our community, and it just, to me, is a common sense thing that we can do rather quickly. With that, I'm super excited to get started. Thank you, Volusia County residents, District Four, for giving me this opportunity. I won't let you down.
And at-large, County Councilman Jake Johansson.
Thank you, Nancy. First of all, I'd like to thank my family, friends, and supporters for their trust in me to assume this role for the next four years. I really didn't, and people have asked me, are you excited? Are you excited? I really, I've taken the oath a few times before in my life, so I didn't think too much of it, but when your three sons, two of which are in college, wake up at 8:00 in the morning to attend an event, all of a sudden, you realize how important it is. So for the two of you, one of you that just arrived from Paris, thank you very much for coming. Reed, I knew you were coming because you got out of high school, so. So for the rest of you here that have supported me tirelessly for 11 months, I'm humbled by your presence, I was humbled by your support, and I look forward, for those of you that are elected, working with you and your cities, and for those of you that aren't, everybody here has mentioned it, we're here to work for you. Government doesn't have money, we manage your money that we force you to give to us, and I vow to do that with the utmost of fiscal stewardship. I ran on a platform of the four Cs, and everybody has mentioned here so far, in one way or another, all four of them, cooperation, collaboration, communication, and common sense. Well, my heart is full, and I arrived here today assured that we can accomplish those goals with this group of elected officials. As most of you know, I welcome a good debate. I'm always open to alternative thought. Don't ever think that I come in here with a predetermined vote. I might have an idea, but it's here where the council members can debate, and it's here, it's the first time often that we get to hear those opposing views. And I want to keep an open mind, and I'll always consider other ways of doing business, and that's mainly for the staff. You all know I came from the city management job in Port Orange a few years ago. I have my way of doing things. George, you and the staff have your way of doing things. Your way might not be my way, and all it takes is a little bit of an explanation, and I'll probably get it right away or go, okay. Good luck with that. But it usually works out. This job is not a one-man show, it's a team effort. And when I say a team, I think Danny mentioned it, we have federal entities that we deal with, we have state entities that we deal with, we have local cities that we deal with, we have citizens that we deal with, and I'm using the term "deal" in a good way. And it's very important that we all work together to move our county forward. The fellow council members, and the chairman, and I will endeavor to work to move our county forward. It's my intent to be one of the shining stars of the state here in Volusia County, not somebody that the state legislature and the governor or anybody else looks at and goes, oh, them. And there are counties and cities out there that are like that right now, so I endeavor to be a shining star and not a bad mark. One of my key goals in the next four years is to work hard to increase the median income in our county. I don't want to lower our county standards to allow people to live here, I want to raise their standards. It's good for the citizens, it's good for the people of our county, and it's good for our county. I'll also continue to work with our partners in the county to promote the proper workforce development, to ensure we have the right mix of people staying in the county to sustain a vibrant community. Ensuring we have the right people doing the right work is an important piece of the puzzle. Florida would not be as desirable of a place to live if we don't have HVAC technicians, plumbers, electricians, nurses, physicians assistants, medical care workers, and other folks needed. We don't want them to go elsewhere for that, we want them to come back here. Last but not least, maybe not today, but starting after this, people's time is important to me. I've been to many council meetings here and in other cities where people wait hours to speak for or against some item, only to get three minutes. That's why I think it's important that we move agendas along in a deliberate fashion, and consider making contentious issues, and we know what is going to be contentious, time certain, so our public are not taking half and full days off of work when they can ill afford to do so, to get their three minutes of speaking. I've seen that happen a few times, and people just can't afford it. I don't really care about the people and the lawyers up front that are paying $500 an hour, but it matters to everybody, and I think it's very important that we respect people's time. So in that vein, I wish you all well. I'll try to be respectful of your time and give up the floor.
Thank you, Jake. That's probably the perfect speech for what I wanted to say, and actually, from every one of you, the words that you spoke this morning. I'll welcome you again. I look forward to an incredibly busy year, because we have some issues that we have to deal with, following two devastating storms that Danny mentioned, infrastructure, all the things that you heard mentioned up here. And so what I want to do in just a couple minutes is to tell you just one of my goals and how I see us getting there. And that goal is to make sure that each one of you is heard and respected, and I will insist that each of you do the same thing, that you, we allow each other to be heard and our points of view respected, and yes, Jake, that our meetings are productive and efficient. In order to do that, we use Robert's Rules of Order. And Robert's Rules of Order is a fabulous language, it's not an easy language, but the purpose of it is to give, is to protect the rights and the views and the opinions of both the minority and the majority on a council and in the public. So our, I believe that our chief goal, our chief responsibility is to protect the God-given, constitutionally-protected rights of the people that we represent, and we do that through the way that we honor them, the way that we show fidelity to the Constitution and of the United States, of Florida, and our county charter, and in the way that we respect one another. I was going to ask you a question, I don't think I have to now after hearing from each one of you, but I'll say it anyway. I would like for each of us to look inside and ask ourselves, do we want to be a group or a team? A group would be seven individuals, different views, locked in, our own agendas, and it would not be productive or efficient for the citizens of Volusia County. A team is still seven people with different views, with different ideas, but a team will respect one and But a team will respect one another, listen to each other. And as Jake just said, occasionally change your mind according to the debate that is heard here. We need to debate important issues. And so to that end, I will be a benevolent dictator when it comes to process of Robert's Rules of Orders. I will be absolutely liberal when it comes to content. To give you the ability to say whatever you want. Again, I'm asking that each of us is respectful to one another, but you should be able to be heard and say what you want. And so with that in mind, I view my position as Chair to be the servant of this council through the utilization of Robert's Rules of Orders to give you the ability to accomplish the goals that you have set out, to do the things that you want to do. I want this to be a council that the public looks at, that the press looks at and says, I didn't expect that. Our public deserves that. The people that elected each one of you and me two years ago want to see a group that isn't homogeneous. We don't all think alike, but that can come together and debate issues in a way that's respectful and productive. And I think we will do that. I'm looking forward to it. And I just thank all of you again for the words that you spoke and welcome you here. There are some members of, of our local elected officials that want to speak to each one of you. I will give them time to do that right now. First, I would like to start with our supervisor of elections, Lisa Lewis. You would, and then any other elected official who would like to address the council. Will have that chance.
Good morning. First of all, congratulations to each of you on a well-run election. I've had more compliments on this election than any before that I've conducted. So that's thanks to the candidates I know and the campaigners. November, I will tell you what's much better than August. I was out more in August with trouble. But November was very well-run and I appreciate that from each of you. I wanted to offer my congratulations. Welcome to the county council. Some of you I know a lot more than others. I've known a lot longer. But I look forward to getting to know each of you better and working with you throughout the year. And what I have for each of you, re-elected, newly-elected, our certificate of elections from our office. That states when we did file the certificate of election on November 18th, the canvassing board with the state and that you are elected. So congratulations. Thank you.
We do have several mayors that would like to speak.
Hi, Nancy Miller, Daytona Beach Shores. Congratulations. I am so looking forward to each and every one of you. When I took office four years ago, it's hard to believe it's four years. One of my goals was to improve our relationship as Daytona Beach Shores with the council. I think we started on that at the beginning, but I'm looking forward to improving that even more. I know I'm speaking to the choir here, but I need your help in Daytona Beach Shores. When I went out visiting businesses yesterday and I hear that their revenue is down 30 to 50% because of the tourism. We need to work together to do something, you know, to get that beach back where it needs to be. I am willing to work with each and every one of you. I'm looking forward to it. Again, congratulations and this is going to be the greatest council ever. Thank you so much.
All the mayors are lined up over there? You are? Okay. Didn't I see Diesel DePuy? Is he coming up with you? Edgewater now runs on Diesel.
Mr. Chair, you actually had seven mayors here this morning. And, but that, one of the things that, Don Burnett with the city of Port Orange. Everybody introduce themselves.
Lois Peritzky, town of Hansinlet.
Chris Cloudman, city of Deland.
Diesel DePuy, city of Edgewater Mayor.
Somebody's got a club here. We're going to talk. We just wanted to say that over the last few years and particularly with the involvement of a number of the individuals here with the Volusia League of Cities, the cities in Volusia County have met a level of collaboration that's been unseen in years. We've got cities and neighbors working to get, neighboring cities working together in ways that just hasn't happened in a long time. And we welcome this new council into that. If there's any way that we can help, we're here to do that with you because we're all about moving our communities forward, large and small. So congratulations to all of the new guys. You know, we want to see some new girls up there from time to time, but there are seven wonderful faces up there and we look forward to what you have to offer us.
Congratulations to all of you and we are here, we are a resource for you. If you have any questions regarding the impact that anything you're considering on the constituents in each of our municipalities, please reach out to us. We would love to be of help.
I want to congratulate you all and congratulate the fact that you get to spend so much time in the best city in the world, which is the city of Deland.
Congratulations. I look forward to working with each and every one of you and getting to know you a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck.
I would, I would just add to what they said that to the rest of the council to really consider getting involved in the League of Cities and attending their meetings on monthly basis. They're worthwhile, they're productive and it helps all of us work together better. Who's going first?
Hi, my name is Monica Paris, Daytona Beach City Commission. I want to congratulate everyone. I got to know some of you a little bit better on the campaign trail. And Matt knows that it was a very difficult campaign trail and I'm glad that we got to experience this together. I liked that everyone was talking about teamwork, working together with municipalities as well. We did have a lot of flooding in Daytona Beach. Over a thousand plus homes in my area alone were flooded. So I really need your help, federal government's help to bring awareness so we could get funding to help with the infrastructure. I would like to bring more events to Daytona Beach, so you know, we'll be on board with that also. Thank you very much. I wish you all the best of luck. Pray for you that God gives us all the wisdom and strength to make the right decisions for the people that elected us and put their faith and trust in us. So thank you all.
Congratulations to all of you. I'm Kat Atwood. I'm the new councilwoman in Port Orange. And it was a wonderful, I loved it. I loved campaigning. It was a wonderful time for me. I got to meet all of you. Got to meet a lot of constituents in our town and all the neighboring towns. Matt and I go back to sixth grade, so we're, we're Westside people when it wasn't cool to be Westside. Because everybody came to Volusia County for the beaches, so we brought Westside popular. This was such an amazing experience and to get to know everybody in such a different way. I'm retired Navy, so the captain and I know that life. And we are happy to bring discipline to what we bring to the cities. And we are looking forward to working together. Part of campaigning and getting to know each other was falling in love with this life and being dedicated to the world that we bring in a collaboration. So I think that the next four years is going to be amazing to the residents. And all we have to do is pledge to work together and then honor that pledge. We're going to do great things. I look forward to it. Congratulations.
Are there any other elected public servants that wanted to speak? And there is.
Sorry, my name is Shirley Gillis. I am city councilwoman, District 1 for Edgewater, Florida. I met a lot of you on the campaign trail and that was a pleasure as well. And I just wanted to congratulate you guys. I don't, I wasn't really prepared to speak today. I didn't have anything prepared. I wish I did. But I just really wanted to congratulate you guys and I look forward to working with you in the future to see what we can do for our city as well as the other cities in the county. And I look forward to seeing the League of Cities as well. I've been attending those and thank you guys for everything you do. I know that this is a process and the campaign trail was rough and thank you guys.
Thank you. Welcome.
Morning Chair Brower. Good morning, new county council members. Welcome and greetings from the city of New Smyrna Beach. We couldn't be more delighted on behalf of Colad Rashadat and the entire city staff and the entire city council know that we are depending on you to keep the promises that you've made, to hold to the traditions and the commitments that you've talked about, the values that you hold, the speeches you made this morning. If you can complete 50% of that, you'll be ahead of most of the politicians that we've elected previously. We really are depending on you to keep your word and to be out there and to listen to the people. What we learned in the last catastrophe is that people are out there still hurting today in Volusia County. And you've got that front and center in your minds and I appreciate that. Now we've got the arduous task of bringing it home. We've talked a good game. We've now got to deliver. And so I know each and every one of you have it in your heart. If you can put it into practice and work together, as I heard the chairman talk about, becoming a team, that will deliver the product. Don't have to all think the same. None of us do. The beauty of the tapestry of diversity that we have in our county, in each of our cities, is a rich delivery of a variety of life experiences. Not all of us were raised the same. Not all of us have the same life experiences. But what you bring to this group, what you bring to this body and what you bring home to each of your districts will be richly blessed if you can listen to one another and go that extra mile to listen more than you talk. Thank you for listening to me, my short words this morning. God bless each and every one of you. We're counting on you. Thank you so much.
Hello and congratulations to all of you. I'm Jessie Thompson from our Volusia County School Board. And I saw all of you campaign and I am so proud of each and every one of you and what you went through. Mr. Chair, I loved hearing you say that we should all work as a team because on behalf of the Volusia County Schools, I mean, we're a huge part of this county. And I look forward to working with every single one of you to make sure that all of our kids, our teachers and our staffs have the best education and jobs and life humanly possible. Thank you all so much for your service and God bless all of you.
I don't see any other movement. Okay. County manager, county attorney, would either one of you like to say anything to the new council? I know you've spent a lot of time with them in the last few weeks, but.
I'd just say, let's get to work.
All right, with that in mind, let's take care of the business at hand for the day. We do have several items, not very many on the agenda, but first we need to finish completing the organization of the council. Yeah, if any, anybody wants to leave now, thank you again for coming and we'll look forward to seeing you in, in future meetings. Bye Mayor. So we'll start with item one, which is just the formal organization of, of this council. Just giving everybody time to walk out. This resolution just, we're going to, we're going to call for a motion, a second and a vote on a resolution, resolution that just states every member. I'll just read the last paragraph of it so that everyone is aware of what we're doing. It says that Jeffrey S. Brower, Michael Jake Johansson, Donald Don Dempsey, Matthew Matt Reinhardt, Daniel Danny Robbins, Troy Kent and David Santiago are hereby declared to constitute the county council of Volusia County, Florida. And as such are hereby declared to be duly organized for the full assumption of duties provided by section 301 of the Volusia County Charter. All resolutions and parts of resolutions in conflict here with, be and the same are hereby repealed. So do we, do I have a motion to approve the resolution? Motion to approve by Robbins, second by Jake Johansson.
Point of clarification. Sorry, first meeting.
That's okay.
I just got to make sure we're all on the same page.
What is your point?
Whenever we have an item like this, do you as the chair want us to hit the request to speak? To make a motion or can we just make a motion without requesting to speak?
If you would use the, the button and let me know you want to, want to speak. I'm fine with it either way. But I think in order to go back to what I said at the beginning, just in process, let's, let's use the system here so that we're not talking over one another. So you know, Danny's used to making motions as they come up, but let's use the system, press the button and I'll call on you. We have a motion, we have a second and now I'll, I'll open it up to, to discussion. I don't know if there's any other discussion besides what Mr. Kent brought up.
Just if you don't mind, Chairman.
I don't mind, no.
Great. Yeah, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page with that because when I sat down and got my instructions, it was hit that. And I'm okay either way. I agree with you. I could go either way with it. I just want to make sure I'm following the rules that we've set forth. So, okay, we're going to use the button. I'm good to go. And of course I'm great with the resolution.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And resolution passes and you were all, I think you've been serving since January 1st anyway. And that brings us to item number two. Election of a county council vice chair for the year 2023. And so I will entertain nominations. Troy Kent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This morning I'd like to nominate Councilman Danny Robbins as our vice chair.
Okay, we have a nomination of Danny Robbins by Troy Kent. Jake Johansson.
I would like to second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Troy Kent. I got to look at where everybody's name is on this list now. You're all new. Motion for Danny Robbins as vice chair, second by Jake Johansson. Troy, did you, you have to press a button to take your name off too? You had something else?
I still wanted to talk.
Okay, go ahead.
And, and I, you know, I'm, I'm a guy that does his homework. So I've read all of our Robert's Rules of Order and I paid close attention. And it stated that, you know, usually the maker of the motion gets the first bite at the apple here. So I just wanted to say, all of you gentlemen, Don, I met you today. Chairman, I met you today for the first time. Some of the others I've met a couple of times. I think each of you would be an excellent vice chair. Danny has been on the council for two years. I just wanted to explain why I made the nomination. Danny's been on the council for two years and I think Danny has a common sense approach to solving problems. So that's why I made the motion. That's all I wanted to say.
Any other comments, discussion? We have a nomination by Troy Kent for Danny Johnson to be. You going to change your name for this? For Danny Robbins to be vice chair, second by Jake Johansson. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. And Danny is elected vice chair, seven to zero. Did you vote? Under your breath.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a clarification that the vote is actually six to zero because Mr. Santiago is not here.
That is true. He'll have to get up. That brings us to item three, resolution adopting 2023 county council meeting schedule. And I'm assuming everyone has had a chance to look at that. Though I, I have one point of clarification for staff. It says in section one that the county council meetings will begin at 10 a.m. Is that a misprint or because we've been starting at 9:30? Did you, was there a reason you wanted to change that?
Point of order, sir.
What's your point?
Yes. Should we have a motion and have this on the floor before we have any discussion?
We, we could. I just wanted to make sure we're discussing the, the correct thing. But if you would like to make a motion, make a motion.
I'll make a motion for discussion to bring item three up.
Okay, is there a second?
Johansson's second.
Motion to discuss the resolution at hand by Troy Kent, second. Jake Johansson.
Mr. Brower, it was a scripter's error. It should say 9:30. I will get it.
Okay, so if everybody would make note of that, that the times will continue to be 9:30 a.m. You see the dates there. Any questions about date? Jake Johansson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, not, not about dates, but I'm very conscious again about people's time and I just want to have a discussion about about approving this and being locked into a time that involves daytime meetings throughout the year. I do believe that, that there ought to be at least an experiment with this new council on, on a hybrid approach to allow some evening or late afternoon meetings. I know that, that Mr. Dempsey probably works during the day occasionally. And Troy Kent's been known to work during the day occasionally as, as have I. It would benefit us, but more importantly, the folks that have to work all day that take that time out to come and speak. So if we can not lock the time into the, the resolution and be a little fluid on that with the normal time being just a procedurally 9:30 and, and then, and then look at options later.
I, I concur with that and I would actually like to ask the council to consider an amendment to this where as an experiment, as you said, we have one meeting a month in the evening. Or if you want to do it, one meeting in a quarter, I'd say let's try once a month. So I'll just put that on the floor. Troy Kent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Mr. Johansson, I couldn't agree with you more. So I have a list of 36 large, 36 largest counties and those that are nearby to us. And of those 36, 16 are morning only, okay? So that leaves around 20 that either have a hybrid or they're at night. My, my reasoning for wanting to bring this up and talk about this was simply because I love having more public participation. And there's a tremendous amount of people that work for a living every day. And they're not able to come here. And Councilman Johansson talked about expecting people's, respecting people's time. And people here to have public comment and they, they are here for half the day or the entire day. And there's, my hope is that we can actually vote on this today, now. Make changes effective immediately as this elected body. And, and I'm okay with, with two options actually. I'm okay with the hybrid and, and the hybrid meaning an alternate. One day a month, we meet at 9:30. One day a month, we meet at 4:00 p.m. I'm also okay with doing what the Volusia County School Board does, which is they meet at 4:00 p.m. I believe for all of their meetings. I, I, I don't know that staff likes that idea, but this meeting isn't for staff. This is for our residents that live here that put us in these seats so that they can attend these meetings. I think the hybrid approach, it, for me, it, it opens it up so that more people can attend. There's the argument that by doing that, you confuse people. Well, if, if we're going to confuse people, then my vote would be 4:00 p.m. meetings, all of them. And you know, as the chairman, hopefully you'll run these meetings efficiently and effectively and we'll get, we'll get a ton of business done for our residents. So, so that's where I am. I'm, I'm a no on all 9:30 in the morning meetings.
Would you like to make an amendment to this resolution then to 4:00 p.m. meetings or?
I, I, I would. I'd be happy to do that. I was, I see where there's a couple more people that wanted to speak. And after I heard from them, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to make that amendment. Kind of see which way the wind is blowing here a little bit. Like I said, my preference is all 4:00 p.m. meetings. But if not, then for me, it's, it's a minimum of, of an alternating, alternating meeting time from 9:30 to 10. So yeah, I'd like to hear from them first and then I'll, I'll jump right in with the amendment.
This is encouraging. Matt Reinhardt.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I totally understand that and respect it. We've, we've talked a lot about that during the campaign, I know. And it is about the people and it is about the ability for them to, to be able to be here. I've always been a cost person, so I would have to look at staff to say, should we look at what the cost would be because you have to have certain people? I don't know. And, and it definitely warrants a discussion. I do, I didn't think about the process you just said about how it may confuse people by doing one and alternating. That may be confusing. So I would lean probably one way or the other, as you just said, but I, that being said about the costs and, and I'm not sure what the agenda looks like at those other counties. I know that I have been attending meetings for, for a while now and I know that they tend to get quite lengthy. It is what it is, but I, I would like to know what the cost associated with that is to have certain staff here. And how does that, every decision has an impact. And it's impactful on, on staff as well. I understand it's not about just the staff. I totally get it. But to adjust certain schedules and whatnot to, you know, to have them here to, for nighttime meeting and then what suffers the next day because those staff members aren't here because you have to adjust their schedules. And I'm just, just food for thought.
Danny Robbins.
Yeah, I see everything that everyone's saying. I know historically and I had supported trying nighttime meetings last about two years ago. Something I ran into, and I don't know if jumping right into this right away, Commissioner Kent, with all four, maybe four o'clock meetings, would, would y'all be open to maybe sticking our foot in that, in the pool before we jump in? Because I know, and I'm only saying that for, for one reason. That Matt brought it up, cost, that's kind of really secondary to me right now. But the fact during our budget hearings, we hardly have anybody and that's probably the most important meetings of, of our fiscal year. We barely have anybody and, and, and I think that should, should play into the some decision making here. So if we want to try it, I'm down, I need to probably be politically correct. I'm okay with trying that out and supporting this council, whatever direction they, they choose to go. But also too, we got to remember that, that we're the representatives. It is too easy to communicate. It's 2023. The taxpayers give us a half a dozen ways to communicate. We don't have passenger pigeons and some of this old timey stuff. So ultimately it is our duty to, to bring these issues up whenever our meetings are during our, during the topic, if they cannot be present because they do work. That falls on us and that's our responsibility, but I'll support this council, whatever direction they want to go. I'm, I'm in complete support of trying it before we, Chair, I mean, can we make that motion to, to try it? Would you guys be in agreeance to that? Maybe for a couple of months?
Yeah, let's do, I like what Troy said and hearing from everybody, the county manager would like to speak. Let's hear from him first and then Mr. Kent would like to speak and then we will entertain a, a motion. I, I think we're heading in the right direction. George.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just, there were some questions being raised there. Mr. Kent's correct. I mean, the staff is here to serve and will serve the pleasure of this council as far as the time of the meeting. We'll make that adjustment if it's the will of the council. I did, will point out that you do have support staff. There are different rules for different people, right? So you have hourly employees that will have to be dealt with and that could result in overtime or a schedule change would, would work to be fiscally prudent. But you also have some union contracts in play here for security. So I would, I would have to research that to find out what that would mean. But, but likely it would mean a little bit of overtime. This would be a substantial amount, well, given that you, you know, meet 26 times, it's not, it wouldn't be that substantial, but it definitely would be a cost. Probably of other note though, as far as the timing of doing this. For instance, the, the next meeting, we had the agenda conference on yesterday and already, you know, there's wheels in motion when it comes to land use, land use advertising that is already occurring. So that's something that when, if we were to start this, I'm not so sure we could start it at the next meeting. I would have to check because things have probably already been advertised for land use type activities. I think the good news is if we're going in a later direction, we still may be able to accommodate that, but we'd have to notify everybody that it's later. It probably couldn't be earlier. So again, I'll have to check with legal and with, with Clay Irvin to get a solid answer on that. But maybe an easier solution would be if you were going to do something different, you start it maybe at the first meeting in February versus doing it in the, this very next meeting here, which will be the 17th of January.
Those are all good things to, to consider. Troy Kent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Mr. Reckonwald, thank you for jumping in and sharing some insight there. The, the concern about the legal advertisements for the next meeting on the 17th does make total sense to me. But this, this topic from some of the other council members about, you know, we're concerned about the cost. We have a $1.2 billion budget, gentlemen. Okay, and we're going to be able to, to really look at some costs on some different things down the road here. But my month of knowing George Reckonwald, I can tell you this. I, I find him to be honest. I find him to be a forward thinker and I find him to be blessed with common sense. And if we do this, Mr. Reckonwald, it is, is my hope and desire that you will think outside of the box and your employees, guess what? If we're having a meeting at 4:00 p.m., maybe they don't start work at 8:00 a.m. that day. And certainly the next day.
Sure.
They don't start, you know, right away if they don't have to. You will have that ability and sir, that is your job. And I know that you and Suzanne will, will be able to make that happen and it would be fantastic. Because at the end of the day, this is about our residents. And this is about them being able to actively participate. And you know, we're, we're talking about pennies when we're looking at a $1.2 billion budget. So, and I know that there's possibly some more conversation, but I'm going to jump right out with this amendment to my motion and that is, and actually I think it might be cleaner and easier that I'll withdraw my motion if the second one will withdraw his and then I'll just redo mine. So I'll withdraw my motion.
And I can withdraw my second.
Okay, so my new motion is that starting effective Thursday, February 7th, Volusia County Council will start each and every one of their meetings at 4:00 p.m.
Is there a second? The motion is the evening meetings start February 2nd, Tuesday, for each meeting at 4:00 p.m. Not a hybrid system, but every meeting. That's the motion on the table. Is there a second?
Not seeing a second. I'll withdraw my motion, Mr. Chairman. And I will try a second bite or a third bite at this apple.
Please.
My new motion is starting February, Tuesday, February 7th, we will alternate meetings starting at 9:30 a.m. and 4:00 p.m.
Alternating 9:30 and 4:00 p.m. I agree with what you said previously, it could be confusing, but I actually like it because it tries. Let's see if the public comes, if, if, if they show up and participate. That's your goal. That's, I think that's the goal of everyone here. So I've, and I'm pleased with that. Danny Robbins.
No, I, I agree. Troy. I, I think this is going in the right direction. I think we should definitely just try it out. And let's see, let's see where it goes. If, if the demand is there, I'm all in. You got, you got my support. But just for clarity, so one meeting of the month, or excuse me, we're going to try Tuesdays at 9:30 and then Thursdays, the second meeting at 4?
No, our, our meetings are always on Tuesday, looking at our calendar of events. So our, our meetings are always on Tuesday except for our first meeting of the year, which in our charter says has to be on the first Thursday of, of January. So you know, when that meeting comes, you know, next year, by the way, we have to do that again in January. Those two meetings are already scheduled for us, the first two in January, I believe. So no. My, I misspoke. That's okay. So no, it would be, it would be alternating on, and it would stay on Tuesdays, but it would be alternating to start time only. So one meeting of the month starts at 9:30 and one starts at 4:00 p.m. And you know, since I'm talking again, I'll just say, you know, my concern with that is, is the confusion piece. And will more people, you know, participate and we'll be able to, you know, judge and view looking here? But is someone going to be here, you know, counting people and, and keeping track of, of who's here and who's participating? And how long will it take people to realize, well, this is what we're doing? Which is why I wanted to get away from that confusion piece and just say, you know, out of the 16 cities in Volusia County, none of them have daytime meetings. Not one. Volusia County Schools starts their meetings at 4:00 p.m. So we're here at 9:30 a.m. And as Mr. Johansson said, you've got something on the agenda. Take a half day, take a full day. It's going to cost you. You know, to me, I'm like, why are we doing that? If we want to try something, let's try it. Let's jump in and try it. 4:00 p.m. every day. I mean, every meeting, 4:00 p.m. at, 4:00 p.m. every meeting. Go, go from there. And if you don't like it, well, guess what? We're the elected body. We get to make these rules. So we could change it whenever we want to, or we could do it for a year and say, hey, we're going to try this. Volusia County hasn't done that. Volusia County is, it's daytime every meeting. So you've got a lot of people, you've got employees that work for the county that may want to come and participate in these meetings and they can't because they're on the clock and they're working somewhere. So you know, I, I withdrew my motion and went to this hybrid because there was not, not, there was no one with any support. Chairman, I know, I think you said you would, but you weren't willing to give up the gavel to the, to the vice chair to second that motion and that's okay. But I think you all understand where I am with it. I think it's better for our public, 4:00 p.m. meetings, but if I can't get that, then I'll go with the hybrid. And by the way, if I can't get, if I can't get that for everybody, you'll see me here every meeting at 9:30. I'll second it.
Okay, so you, Danny Robbins is a second, seconding your motion. Just to clarify, on February 7th, is that meeting at 4 o'clock or 9:30 a.m.?
If, if you don't mind, I'd like to defer to Mr. Reckonwald. Mr. Reckonwald, so, so February 7th, would you rather have the first meeting of the month or the second meeting of the month starting at 9:00 a.m.? Because it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, I think it works best if we do the morning meeting on the 7th.
The first day of every.
And then the second meeting of the month will be the, the evening meeting. And, and that will establish that pattern, which can help with any confusion.
That will help reduce confusion. So.
Mr. Chairman, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Okay, so we have a, Danny, you made a second. Are you, you're good with that? So the motion on the floor is that Tuesday, February 7th, and the first meeting of every month thereafter. and the first meeting of every month thereafter, and Mr. Kent is right, we can change this down the road. If it doesn't work, we don't like it, we're not locked into this for a year. I believe that it will take some time for everybody to get used to do the change. But I also think it'll be the talk of the, of the community, that the council has listened to their constituents who have asked that we have evening meetings. So the first meeting, February 7th, first meeting of each month, which is always on the first Tuesday, will begin at, your request was morning or evening?
9:30.
9:30. So the first meeting of each month would be 9:30. The second meeting of the month, which is the third Tuesday of the month, would be at 4:00 PM. That's the motion. And the second, is there any other discussion about that? Jake Johansson?
I just want to make the comment that I think the hybrid and why I didn't second the 4:00 is because I think each one of us will eventually want to go to one of our city meetings, a majority of which are on some Tuesday. So by having the hybrid, it'll give us an opportunity, hopefully, to wrap up at daytime and then get over to our cities to get our three minutes or share some time with them. Part of that communication for me is getting out to, as the at-large, you understand, Mr. Chairman, there's a lot of cities. And in order to get out to see them and get the most bang for the buck, usually it's at a council meeting. So I appreciate trying the hybrid and I wholeheartedly support it.
Okay. Don Dempsey?
Yeah, I'm green here, obviously, but I know Jeff, you've been here a while and Danny. So there actually has been discussions about this and there are a lot of people who would prefer this nighttime. And Troy, you guys have all, that is a bone of contention about some of our meetings. That is an issue.
We speak, just discussion freely, just real quick.
I don't care. Yeah.
Danny Robbins?
Yeah, it came up early on a couple of years ago. I honestly, if people did public records, I haven't got, gotten any, hardly any requests for it, but I supported it. And I do believe the same as my colleagues do, that we can, we can try it out if it's not, you know, if they don't take, take the hook and it doesn't work, we can always change it, like Troy said. So, but yeah.
Don, were you finished?
Well, I was just going to say, yes, Jake, thank you for acknowledging, I got a day job. So yeah, selfishly, this helps me a lot. So yeah, my eyes lit up and Troy made the motion. I guess my only question for George is, I mean, I know the sheriff's office has limited staff sometimes, so I don't know how this is going to affect them as far as having to accommodate security and all that, as well as staff.
I'll check with the sheriff, but the idea there, we're paying for an extra duty on that. So I think he can be able to accommodate us. We also provide security from other places that are like here right now. You have Beach Patrol, Corrections, other entities that are providing security as we speak.
So it should be able to be accommodated. Yeah.
Thank you. Troy Kent?
Thank you again. This is, this is refreshing and I'm glad we're having this healthy discussion. So just one little piece here that I made, amended the motion to see how you all feel about this. But I'm not crazy about the 9:30 and then 4:00, meaning the 30. Like, I think that's a little bit confusing to people. Like, what about 10:00 AM and 4:00 PM? Or 9:30 and 4:30? You know, keeping it consistent with the no half hour in there? So I, you know, I'm anxious to hear from, if anybody else, and if nobody else, that's okay. We'll keep it at 9:30 and I could be the only one that's going, that's confusing, you know, 9:30, you know, 4:00? This way, it's, it's 10:00 AM it starts or it starts at 4:00 PM? 10 or 4? 10 or 4?
Discussion. Danny Robbins?
I'll second your mo-, if you make that a motion, I'll second it.
You making it a motion or amending your motion?
I'm, I'm not going to withdraw. I'm just going to amend my motion that the first meeting in February, February 7th, will start at 10:00 AM and the second meeting, February 21st, will start at 4:00 PM. And then every meeting after that, with the first meeting of the month starting at 10:00 AM, the second meeting of the month starting at 4:00 PM.
Okay, 10:40. The motion, the motion on the floor is that the first meeting, Tuesday, February 7th, will, and then every first meeting of the month after that will begin at 10:00 AM. The second meeting of the month, which is on the third Tuesday, will be at 4:00 PM. That's the motion on the floor, seconded by Danny Robbins. Any other discussion on that before I call for the vote? Well, this will be interesting. Mr. Kent, would you call the roll, please?
I'd like to clarify that this is on the amended motion.
This is just on the amendment to change the time.
Mr. Dempsey?
Proof?
Yes.
Mr. Johansson?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Reinhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mr. Brower?
Yes. And so the amendment passes 6 to 0 to change the time from 9:30 to 10:00. Now we need to vote on the main motion, which is to alternate the meetings at 10:00 AM on the first Tuesday of the month and on the third Tuesday of the month at 4:00 PM. Is that stated to your, okay? Would you please call the roll on that?
Mr. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Johansson?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Mr. Reinhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mr. Brower?
Yes. And we don't always call the roll. I wanted to call the roll on that one because I think it's important for constituents to know because this has been something that they've asked for. And I think it's a great way to start this council. And it, there's no doubt, it makes it more, a little more difficult for staff and that does not escape us. But I, I agree that George is capable of handling that with the way we structure time or, and it will be important for us to try and keep the meetings as efficient and productive as possible so that we're not here till 2:00 in the morning. Because we do have meetings that have 25, 27. Are you passing the, are you passing the gavel to? That is. Will, a lot of that will depend on, on me and, but I would also ask that each council member, Mr. Kent has already done it a little bit, but if you find that I'm doing something in error, then call for a point of order and let me know what that point is. And if there's an error, we'll correct it. If there's not an error, we'll go on. What I don't want is to have Robert's Rules of Order used as a, as a weapon. I want it to be something that we use to bring us all together and do what we just did. So in order, since, since I'm talking about time, we'll finish with that and move to item four, which is a confirmation of appointment of Mr. Joseph King to the position of Division Director, Fire Rescue Division.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Honorable Members of Council, Kevin Captain, Community Information Director. As you mentioned, Agenda Item 4 is the confirmation of appointment of Joe King as Director of Volusia County Fire Rescue. County Manager George Reckonwald will provide you with Mr. King's background. George?
Yeah, thanks, Kevin. Honorable Chair, Honorable Counsel. It is with my great pleasure I bring forward today for your confirmation, Joe King as our Director of Volusia County Fire Rescue. Very happy to be able to do this today. Joe is a highly respected local firefighter. More than three decades, he's worked here in the area, Volusia and Flagler County. We're very fortunate to have him and his leadership, his work ethic, his attitude and his skills really made this a very easy decision for me. Joe joined Fire Rescue in 2021 as Deputy Fire Chief and then was named the interim director in July when the previous chief, Howard Bailey, retired. Before joining our team, Joe worked with the Flagler County Fire Rescue as a Deputy Fire Chief from 2017 to 2021. He's been a division chief and fire marshal from 2013 to 2017. He also worked for Ormond Beach from 1990 to 2013, rising to the rank of captain in Ormond Beach. He has a bachelor's degree from Columbia Southern University and associate's degree from Daytona State College. First Fire Rescue is one of our larger divisions and I'm very confident with him taking on command. And I think he enjoys the support of the Fire Department and his recent work. I know in union negotiations have gone very well and I expect big things from Joe King.
I don't even need to say anything, do I? I thought that was easy. I did write a few things down because I'm a people person and I like to talk. So usually what happens is I get up here and I'll ramble. So what I wanted to do is just thank you for this opportunity to serve Volusia County as our next fire chief. It's exciting to me to know that at this point in my career, I'm in the right place at the right time for me and my family. And I'm pretty sure my wife would agree. I want to thank my friends and family and coworkers that are here supporting me. You guys see them all here. I mean, it's pretty amazing to me and it means a lot. I won't sit here and thank them all individually because we'll be here a long time. But I would like to recognize my wife, Joy, daughter Madison, and my son Ryan, who couldn't be here today. He's at work. They've been very supportive of me and encouraging of me. And it's not been, it's been a long time, so it's a lot of hours, a lot of work. But I'm also excited to finish my career here and that's my hope. I look forward to working with the county staff. I've been very excited working with the different department heads and everybody here and also the external partners, all the other fire chiefs, and I thank them all for being here today. So I'd just like to thank you for this opportunity and I am really humbled and honored to take part in this team. So I appreciate everything and I'm going to do you guys proud. Thank you.
Well, let's see how this goes. Is Jake Johansson, do you have a motion?
I have a motion to confirm Joe as the Division Director.
Is there a second? Troy Kent?
Yes, I second that motion.
We have a motion to confirm by Jake Johansson, a second by Troy Kent. And comments or discussion? Troy Kent?
Yeah, Mr. King, here we are, working together again. I just wanted you to know that whenever Mr. Reckonwald let me know about this appointment, he said the name and I said, that sounds very familiar. He said it should for you, you know, he came from Ormond Beach a few years back. And I just wanted to say personally to you, congratulations. I love that your wife and daughter are here and if, I apologize, if we had an afternoon meeting, your son might have been out of work and he could have been here. Too soon? Too soon, everybody? But I'm glad, I'm glad you're chuckling with me. But seriously, you know, congratulations and I, and I know that, you know, this is a fantastic opportunity for you. It's also a fantastic opportunity for the county and I look forward to the great things that you're going to implement here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion before we call for the vote? I will, I will just say this, it's been said in this chamber that everybody wants to be a fireman. And I, I assume that will continue under your leadership.
Thank you.
You, we are blessed in Volusia County with a tremendous crew in fire service and EMS. And nobody else has any questions for you. So Matt Reinhardt does.
I've heard a lot of great things about you, Joe, and being involved in public protection. I was on the jail side and we always had a great relationship with fire services. And as I still see a lot of familiar faces here, I think you're going to do terrific things. I really do. And I welcome you. Thank you very much for your service. I appreciate you.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve the nomination of Mr. Joseph King to the position of Division Manager, Fire Rescue Division. We have a second by Troy Kent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And you are confirmed 6 to 0. Congratulations, sir.
One more county council.
Oh.
We have.
Well, well.
Therein lies the issue.
Yes.
We can't hear you.
Okay. Okay, that brings us to item five, another confirmation, this one of appointment by Mr. Joshua J. Williams to the position of Division Director, Traffic Engineering Division.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kevin Captain, Community Information Director, as you mentioned. They clapping for you? Item five is the confirmation of appointment of J. Williams as Director of Traffic Engineering. And again, Mr. George Reckonwald will explain J.'s qualifications for this very important job. Mr. Reckonwald?
Yeah, just waiting for it to clear a second here. Okay. Mr. Chair, Honorable Counsel, it's again, my extreme pleasure and honor to bring before you J. Williams for confirmation of his appointment to Director of Traffic Engineering. J. is another longtime veteran of public service. He, we're recommending him for the Director of the County's Traffic Engineering Division. This is a vital division that oversees transportation plan- This is a vital division that oversees transportation planning, traffic studies, and the construction and operation and maintenance of nearly all the traffic signals in the county, with the exception of the city of Daytona Beach. When John Chaney announced his retirement, we were looking, and we looked all over, and we were able to find J., who came to us from the Department of Transportation. He came in and has been here now. He joined our staff as the Assistant Traffic Engineer in 2021, and he's demonstrated his commitment to making our system safer, more efficient. Like you say, previously, he was 10 years with the Department of Transportation, where he held various roles in the Traffic Operations Department. Since he's been here, he has also taken on such projects as our technology upgrades and our intelligent traffic systems. He received his bachelor's degree in civil engineering from the University of Central Florida. He is a registered professional engineer. He's also a certified traffic signal technician and a certified public manager. And he's known throughout the industry to be someone who's very knowledgeable and great to work with, and that's no small thing in this particular industry, as you'll find out going on when we get into development and a lot of the stuff that this position touches. So a great pleasure that we have, and we're very lucky to have, I believe, J. Williams is our next traffic engineer.
So I'd like to say thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the county council. I'd like to thank Mr. Rechtewald and the rest of the county's leadership team for this great opportunity. Transportation is a critical issue that has the potential to significantly impact the quality of life of our citizens. As Director, I will be committed to helping our division be responsive and meet the needs of this community, to bring a fresh perspective and innovation to our operations, and to helping our team be an example that other transportation engineering agencies can follow. I ask for your support in reaching those goals, and I look forward to working with each of you, as well as all of our other stakeholders, as we deliver on our mission of providing an efficient and safe transportation system for our citizens. I also want to specifically thank my staff. They're a team of hardworking and dedicated individuals, and they deserve recognition for the great job that they do for this county, day in and day out. And I'll be dependent on them in order to be successful. And then lastly, I'd like to thank my family, some of which are here today, for their love and support. Without them, I wouldn't be where I am today. So again, thanks everyone for this opportunity, and I'm looking forward to serving in this role.
Matt Reinhardt, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for the appointment of Mr. Williams to Director of Traffic Engineering. And I wanted to let you know that one of my meetings with Mr. Rechtewald, that was a question right off the bat, was about our traffic and the smart technology. And he spoke very highly of you, and I'm looking forward to conversations with you about that, so I make that motion.
Danny Robbins, will you second it?
Yes, sir, second.
Any other discussion or questions? Troy Kent?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. No, no question, just a quick discussion. Is that your family right behind you?
Yes, sir, yeah, this is my mom, my wife, and one of my two children, my son, my...
Well, I just wanted to tell you, first of all, congratulations. Your wife has not stopped smiling since the second she sat down there, and you're facing us, so you don't get to see it. But I thought it was important that I let you know. I mean, we're all very proud of you, and I can tell that your family is as well. And to me, that's, that's the good stuff. So, hey, knock it out of the park. Thanks, I appreciate it.
So we have a motion on the floor and a second to confirm Mr. J. Williams to the position of Division Director, Traffic Engineering Division. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. You are confirmed six to zero. Congratulations, sir. Kevin, if you would hold up one minute, we've had several private requests for a brief break. It's 11:52, if we could break until 11:57, unless anyone has an issue. Okay. Now it's 58. Go, we'll be right back.
Well, I wish they'd have done more than what they've done here, but...
All right, if everybody could find their seats, we are still waiting on a couple council members. Okay, everybody's seated, so we will proceed with item six, Amendment to Grant Agreement with the State of Florida Department of Environmental Protection for a lot of money.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, council members, Ben Barlett, Public Works Director. Before you today for approval is a, the agreement with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection that was previously approved at a December 6 county council meeting. The state of Florida is requesting some modifications to the agreement that was previously approved, and they've sent it back to us to get it approved by council once again. Basically, the gist of it is that they are changing the funding source that they are using to provide this $5 million for the sand on the beach. And so, happy to answer any questions you have, recommend approval. Pretty much the same thing, doesn't really change any of our obligations for them as far as how we report and how we spend the money.
Thank you. Danny Robbins, you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Jake Johansson, do you have a second?
Yes, second.
We have a, thank you, we have a motion to approve, second by Danny Robbins, a second by Jake Johansson. I'll open it for discussion. Troy Kent?
Yeah, so the information on this was very broad. This is just accepting this money, and we're going to come up with a plan later, is that correct?
Actually, we have submitted a basic scope to them as part of this to get the $5 million. This was five of the $20 million that the governor had allocated to helping counties as far as immediate help with sand on the beach. Our plan is to provide temporary protection to vulnerable properties along the beach and utilizing sand containment vessels, placing sand that we are acquiring from the Florida Inland Navigation District at no cost. The cost will be the trucking and the relocation of the gopher tortoises that are at their site. So we're using that sand, replacing it in containment vessels to protect, temporarily protect vulnerable properties to allow them, to buy them some time to get permits and get seawalls or whatever method of armament they plan on doing. And then, once they've managed to protect their property, the sand that we place out there will actually be available for their use, provided they remove the containment bags, if will, that we are looking for these.
Thank you.
So the, the big, this was approved by a previous council, as you said, the big change is just the state of Florida changing how they're funding it?
Correct.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve this grant agreement. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose, say nay, and motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have item seven, twenty twenty-three, assignment of council members to committees. And we have, I'll just go down the list, we have the affordable housing, that, actually, that's going to be an item. So, the Board of Trustees, Law Library, Don Dempsey, Canvassing Board, I'd like Frank Bruno again, has, can we contact Lisa Lewis about reaching out to him?
I did, did have a conversation with Ms. Lewis, Mr. Bruno, thank you Suzanne, has agreed to serve again, he's willing to serve. It would be for the twenty twenty-four general election, or it could be a member of this council. If you do request Mr. Bruno, we would just need to approach the chief judge to make that appointment, which he did last time.
Okay. Career Source, Troy Kent, Central Florida Community Rail Commission, I will, I will keep that. However, George is, on rare occasions, there's a conflict with time. It would really be nice to have a, an alternate for that. I think the next meeting that we have scheduled, there's a conflict. So, maybe we could discuss that in the next, in our next meeting, but that's, that's an important one to leave.
You'll have to make an appointment of who the alternate is.
And you could discuss that now if you wish, or later.
This is such an important commission, you know, it's Sun Rail Commission. And the meetings are in Orlando, they're monthly. But because the meetings are in Orlando and they go several hours, it's, it usually kills a half a day. But it is important. We are blessed, I think, to have a lawyer on our board. And my first preference would be to have Don be the alternate. But I'm gonna open it up to if anybody else would like to be an alternate for the Sun Rail. Jake Johansson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there are, and I'll bring up both right now, there are two things that I will be attending whether, whether chosen or not. And this is one of them, the Rail Commission, I think it's extremely important. And so, I will be attending, if you wanna kill two birds with one stone, I'll gladly be the alternate. And I defer to the council for that, but, but I will be attending, and the other one is the Team Volusia Economic Development. I'll be attending those as well, so if you'd like to be efficient of the council, council's time, that'd be great. If not, I'll see somebody else there.
I would guess that Mr. Dempsey would be okay with that, okay. And why don't we do that, thank you Jake, I appreciate it. And we, I'll just make that appointment right now, that it'll be Jeff Brower and Jake Johansson for the Central Florida Community Rail. You can start next week. Now, I guess it's the end of the, end of January is the next meeting?
Is January twenty-sixth.
Thank you. Okay. Circuit seven, Community Alliance, we need a representative of, from county government for DCF. Troy Kent, I would, I would really like to have you do that. David Santiago as an alternate. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, I didn't know if we were to wait till the end when you went through all of these, cuz you've mentioned my name. And I just, I just wanna tell you, I will be at every council meeting, I will be at every workshop. I am a school-based administrator, I have to be present at my job during the day. So, when you're appointing me to things like Career Source, it starts at nine AM, that's, that's a no-go for me. Like, that's, it's not gonna work with my schedule, it's not. And then, this one, I think, starts at two thirty PM, I could make, I could make that happen, I could, I have to leave early. But I'd prefer not, I'd prefer some of these committees that, that start a little later, like Department of Juvenile Justice from three to four PM, I see that. And a couple of others, I just wanted to get that out there. Like I said, you and I just met for the first time three hours ago, you know, we shook hands and said hello, so just, just putting it out there for you, Chairman.
Okay, I actually had you down for Department of Juvenile Justice. If the Career Source is a hard schedule to keep, we have a council member who's not here. So, we could, we could appoint him to anything. So, I will, I will nominate or appoint David Santiago to Career Source and relieve you of that responsibility.
Thank you very much, Chairman.
David Santiago. Claims Committee, Jake Johansson. Doris Leeper, Management Plan Advisory Group, which probably won't meet this year. But Danny Robbins, I would love to have you be involved with that. Drug Court Steering Committee, Matt Reinhardt. DUI Misdemeanor Drug Court Task Force, either, I could look at the time, either Troy or Matt for that.
I'm, I'm good with that, if Troy is, I would, I would love that.
Okay. Drug Court will be Matt Reinhardt. DUI Misdemeanor Drug Court, you're a principal, I would really like to have you do that, Troy, but let's look at the time on when they meet.
And I appreciate you giving me a raise, but I'm just an assistant principal. Thank you.
They have not yet scheduled meetings for twenty twenty-three. Let's, let's keep you on there and we'll come back to it.
Sure.
Follow a meeting, please, just, you can reach out to me through, through Michael Dyer. Right now, we'll do Troy Kent. East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, Danny Robbins and Jake Johansson. Elected Officials Roundtable, I'll keep that there. Florida Association of Counties Back Broadband Committee, David Santiago, unless Danny, you would be interested in taking that. I don't know if they will meet this year.
Let's see what David has to, has to say.
We'll keep it. Human Services Advisory Board, David Santiago, Indian River Lagoon, I would really want to keep that. I'm, will be chair of that board, and I'll keep Danny as an alternate. I know that's one you're really interested in, but I believe that some consistency on that board is gonna be important this year with health issues of the, some of the members. Opioid, that's an item. Public Safety Coordinating Council, David Santiago. River of Lakes Heritage Corridor, Danny Robbins. The River to Sea TPO, extremely important infrastructure. It is monthly meetings, start in the morning. So, that may affect you, Troy Kent, and I'd like to have Danny Robbins on that, Jeff Brower, Jake Johansson, Matt. If you would also do that, and then either Kent or Don.
Chair, was this the regular, the regular TPO?
Just the River to Sea TPO.
But that conflict, and just to put it out there, I got a, some interest in doing the executive committee, would, would there be any conflict?
Does it, the, I think the board votes on the executive committee, not, not us. We, we should make that known to them, that you're interested.
And Chairman, you, you mentioned my name, what was that, was that, was that an alternate on that?
Either, either way, I need, we still have a slot, we've got Matt, Jake, me, Danny.
I'd be happy to be an alternate, cuz I just, I'm not gonna be able to make that at nine AM. I'd love to say I would, but.
The good thing about some of these, though, more and more of them are doing Zoom, I've, I've found out with like the DCF one and a couple other ones, so transitioning is kinda neat.
Okay, then instead of Troy Kent, why don't we do David Santiago and we'll make Don Dempsey and Troy Kent the alternate?
Yes.
You're my.
I dictate my own calendar, I've got judges who tell me when and where I have to be.
You live with one.
I know, but she's not the big one, she's just a small Indian.
Right.
But, yeah, I, the, the date, I mean, there's stuff, there's other things that I can do, like.
Well, the problem here, th- this is for an alternate. And there's seven council people and seven slots. So, I'm doing the best as, that I can making you and Troy alternates, which means you'll probably never have to go, but you should keep up with it, cuz it's, keep up with the business.
All right.
Okay, then the, another part of the River to Sea Transportation, River to Sea TPO Transportation Disadvantaged Local Coordinating Board. I'm having to change everything I did, cuz I had Troy Kent for, for that too. Matt, would you do that? Spring Hill CRA, we need to have Don Dempsey as a District One representative. This is not a taxing committee, time taxing. And then, I think David Santiago, because this really affects West Volusia, so that touches on both those districts. Team Volusia, Jeff Brower, or if Danny Robbins, if you're interested in, in Team Volusia, I will switch that to you.
Yeah, I, I am, and can I just respectfully request to be the, the primary on that?
Yes, on Team Volusia?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that, that's what I was offering. Okay, Danny Robbins for Team Volusia. Tourist Development Council, Matt Reinhardt. Value Adjustment Board, another extremely important, I think they meet, George, correct me if I'm wrong, is it four times a year, three times a year?
Yeah, that has to go as an agenda item.
Oh, it does, yes.
But you're correct, they do meet at eight thirty AM on designated Mondays in July, October, and January.
Okay, and that'll go to an item here. Volusia Area State Forest Liaison Panel, Matt Reinhardt, and Volusia Flagler Early Learning Coalition. Troy, I'd love to have you do that as an assistant principal. Let's keep you there and we'll look at their schedule, which is not out and it's intermittent.
Mr. Brower?
Yes.
I have it.
The Volusia Flagler Early Learning Coalition, it, their meetings do begin at eight thirty on January twenty-fourth, March twenty-eighth, May twenty-third, and June twenty-seventh. Just the locations on some of those meetings have not been determined.
At eight thirty in the morning?
Yes, sir.
You're in school at eight thirty in the morning?
Y- yes, I'm at school at seven AM, I start early.
Okay, well, we could always make David Santiago, or if anyone else has an interest in the Early Learning Coalition. Matt, you would do it? I appreciate that, Matt Reinhardt. Okay.
Mr. Brower, I do have a clarification, or a couple. I don't have where you assigned anyone as a representative of county government to the Circuit Seven. You had originally assigned, assigned Mr. Kent, but you didn't clarify who you would want in place.
David Santiago.
Who would be the alternate?
Right now, David, if it doesn't work out scheduling for Troy Kent, then we'll switch it.
Mr. Santiago would be the primary, but this board does have an alternate, so who would you like to be the alternate position?
Well, I wanted to keep it Troy Kent and David, but in order to not, if, if you don't wanna have to change it later, we could switch those and have David Santiago as the, as the primary and Troy Kent as the alternate, and then we don't have to come back for it.
And also for the Team Volusia, you wanted to be designated as an alternate, or were you not interested?
As an alternate, Danny Robbins as primary, I think Jake is gonna go to those meetings too, I will, anybody's. Is that it?
If you don't mind, I'd like to repeat them back to you to ensure I got them right. For the Law Library Board of Trustees, it would be Mr. Dempsey. For the Canvassing Board, it would be Frank Bruno, as long as the judge agrees. Career Source would be Mr. Santiago. The CFRC would be Mr. Brower and an alternate Jake Johansson. The Circuit Seven Community Alliance Representative of County Government would be Santiago and Mr. Kent. With the at-large representative, I'm assuming, still being Tammy Stuck.
I know, we'll, but we'll come back to that, cuz we don't have applicants.
For the Claims Committee, it would be Mr. Johansson. For the Department of Juvenile Justice, it would be Mr. Kent. For the Doris Leeper Management Plan Advisory Group, it would be Mr. Robin. For the Drug Court Steering Committee, Mr. Reinhardt. The DUI Misdemeanor Drug Court Task Force, Mr. Kent. The East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, Mr. Robbins and Mr. Johansson. The Elected Officials Roundtable, Mr. Brower. The Florida Association of Counties Broadband Committee, Mr. Santiago. The Human Services Advisory Board, Mr. Santiago. The Indian River Lagoon, Mr. Brower, with Mr. Rollpens as an alternate. The Public Safety Coordinating Council, Mr. Santiago. The River Lakes Heritage Corridor, Mr. Robbins. The River to Sea TPO, Mr. Robbins, Mr. Brower, Mr. Johansson, Mr. Reinhardt, and Mr. Santiago, with Mr. Kent and Mr. Dempsey being alternate. The River to Sea TPO Transportation Disadvantaged Local Coordinating Council, Mr. Reinhardt. The Spring Hill CRA, Mr. Dempsey as a District One representative, and Mr. Santiago. For Team Volusia, I have Mr. Robbins as the primary and Mr. Brower as the alternate. For the Tourist Development Council, I have Mr. Reinhardt. The Volusia Area State Forest Liaison Panel, Mr. Reinhardt. And for the Volusia Flagler Early Learning Coalition, Mr. Reinhardt.
You're busy. Yes, that's what I had. Thank you. Okay. That takes us to item eight, Appointment of the Florida Association of Counties Board of Directors, the District Eight. I was going to, my suggestion would be Santiago, David Santiago, but I'll open it up for nominations from anyone. This is a good lesson to not be absent, or you get appointed. No other suggestions, and let's. On what? No. Okay. You know what? I will, I'll be glad to do that, or David Santiago, somebody make, if you would make a nomination of either one, and then we'll second and vote on it, Danny Robbins.
I'll nominate Santiago.
Santiago's motion to nominate, is there a second, Matt Reinhardt?
Second. Second.
Any other discussion? Uh, the nomination is David Santiago to the, uh, Fact Board of Direct, Directors. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? By nay. Motion carries six to zero for David Santiago on the fact board. Item nine, Council Member Appointment to the Affordable Housing Committee, um, AHAC. Do we have a nomination for that? Uh, Jake Johansson, I would love to see you do that, but let's see with the board, with the council. No other nominations? Jake?
Sure. I'm checking to see if that conflicts with any of the, uh, the other ones. I, I have no problem being on it, uh, as long as it doesn't come. You know, we can't be in two places at one time. Um, but, but if it doesn't, I'll check later, uh, and let you know, but, uh, if it doesn't, I'd be more than happy to.
Okay. Is anybody else stopping at the bit to be on the, uh, it, it's an important committee? Okay, um, then we'll leave it with, with you, Jake, unless you, uh, come back, uh, for a change. Um, Matt Reinhardt.
I'll make a motion for Jake Johansson, the appointment.
Is there a second Troy Kent?
Yes, I'll second the motion.
Second for Jake. Motion for Jake. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Say nay. Motion carries six to zero. Item ten, Two Council Member Appointments to the Value Adjustment Board for the twenty-twenty-two Property Tax Season. And this is, this is critical that we have, um, uh, members on this that can attend, uh, this meeting. We look at Value Adjustment Board and just clarify it for everyone. They meet at eight thirty AM on designated Mondays in July, October, and January. So that probably knocks out, um, Don Dempsey and Troy Kent. So, somebody like to make a nomination? Anyone else?
Chair, what, what were the meetings? Having a hard time finding it.
Value Adjust Board at, uh, eight thirty AM on designated Mondays. July, October, and January.
I'm not opposed, Chairman, to doing that.
Okay, uh, Troy Kent?
I will make a motion to nominate Jake Johansson to serve on the Value Adjustment Board.
Okay, nomination of, uh, Jake Johansson.
Chairman, I'm sorry, did this one need two? This one needed two. I'm going to withdraw my motion, Chairman, until we get a second person, and, uh, and then we'll, we'll get both at the same time.
Okay. We have one nomination, uh, Jake Johansson. Is there another? Matt, I'm not going to look at your wife, but Affordable Housing in Daytona and...
I, I'm definitely good. I'm good with that, yeah.
You won't speak to me afterwards? Okay, would somebody care to make a motion for the nominations of Jake Johansson and Matt Reinhardt?
I, I would be happy to, Chairman. Uh, I'll nominate Jake Johansson and Matt Reinhardt, Council Members, to the Value Adjustment Board.
Danny Robbins, is there a second? Seconded by Danny Robbins. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Neither of the candidates have said nay, so that passes six to zero as well. Thank you, both. Item eleven, Appointments, uh, of the City of Deland's Ex-Officio Nomination to the Spring Hill Community Development Agency. And this is a nomin, nominee that the City of Deland has already done. We're just approving it. Uh, Jake Johansson.
Uh, motion approved.
Second.
Motion to approve by Jake, seconded by Danny Robbins. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. We are almost there. This one is going to be, uh, have to continue. Uh, item twelve, we need District One, Two, Three, Four, and the East Side, um, uh, for the Chair. For the Historic Preservation Board Appointments. The, the issue is, we need five people and there's three nominees. So someone could make a motion to approve all three and, um, or, um, Matt Reinhardt, which...
Thank you, Chair. Um, I actually had an individual, um, reading this later, um, for the, uh, but it'll be, his application is not in yet, from what I understand, for the Historic Preservation Board. Um, so to hold off until a better time, is that appropriate, or?
On any of the appointments?
Oh, no, no, just that one.
Yes, yeah, we can bring it back at the next, as soon as it, application gets in and it's cleared. It usually takes two weeks. So, yeah, just get the application to Carissa Green as quickly as possible, that... Danny Robbins?
Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the three that are, uh... Did you have something?
I did, if you don't mind. Uh, Chris Ryan, Assistant County Attorney. Um, the way the founding resolution is set up, uh, each individual district, uh, makes nominations. And the outstanding, uh, districts we have are One, Two, Three, Four, and the Chair. So each one of, in order perhaps, um, can nominate one of the three applicants. And then we'll have to have the other two nominated once we have those applicants in.
Okay. Danny, you want to make, uh, one of the nomin, nominations for any of these people?
Yeah, I'll just pick the, um, where was it? John Paul, is it Jelenou? He was the first applicant.
Okay, Troy Kent?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Chairman. So, little bit of confusion here, uh, on this last item that we have for this beautiful morning. Especially after hearing the, um, deputy attorney talk. Could you come back up? Did, did I miss a memo that I was supposed to have somebody for this board?
Oh, no, we're having a hard time getting applicants for this. We're trying our best. Staff is reaching out to, um, qualified candidates.
Did I hear you correctly that the members from their district get to appoint someone?
Yes.
Okay. Answers now?
No, no, sorry. Give us an opportunity.
Okay.
Not from, not from their district, or it can be from any district. I apologize.
Okay, but each member of this elected body gets to appoint someone, to nominate someone, is that right?
From the applicants.
To nominate somebody. Um, so Carissa Green has a, like a web portal where members of the public can look at all your boards and apply. So these three names are people that have applied, but you are not obligated, you're not confined to these three. If there's somebody else, you could say, you know, I'm not ready to make my nomination, or somebody I like to approach. You can certainly do that and defer your nomination.
Th- thank you, Mr. Dyer. I just, I, I feel, um, ill-prepared for this right now, and I don't like feeling like that. I like coming prepared, ready to rock and roll, let's get this job done, and this was not portrayed, I mean, this wasn't explained to me at all. This is, I was like, well, I guess we'll find out what happens with this one when we get here today, and, and, you know, talking about running efficiently and effectively. Um, there was just that, that missing communication piece, and you know what? We'll put it behind us and move forward, because each of us knows a lot of people in parts of our county. And, and I know some that I think would be extremely excited to participate in this, but they haven't been asked by me or anybody else in, in, in the community. And apparently they've got to go on a portal so Miss Green can approve them, and then there are an application, they're there, as...
And she does take handwritten applications too, but I think just for convenience to the public.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And I think this board, if I recall, Chris, you're confirming, this board is having trouble getting quorum, right?
Very much so.
So, uh, that was one of the reasons why they put it forward, just so they could meet.
Gotcha.
Certainly, if there's somebody, another candidate you wish to approach, it's, uh, certainly fine.
I, I just haven't had the opportunity yet. There, there was no communication about this, so, you know, I, I feel a little foolish. And, um, I want to make sure that I get that opportunity, so if, if the council wants to approve some today, and, but minus mine, because I want to have an opportunity to talk to somebody. If that makes sense.
Here, yeah, it, it doesn't make sense, and here's what I was going to say. Th- this is a...
Did you say it does or doesn't make sense?
It, it doesn't.
It doesn't?
It doesn't make sense.
Okay.
Not what you said, but the way that we're doing it right now.
Okay.
And the issue for me is, and I was going to speak to this, is it's, it's on the agenda that everybody got, but it's still not, it still doesn't make it clear that you needed to come prepared with somebody. We are advertising for, um, people on all of these boards, and we're not getting people responding. So I want to appeal to this council that Carissa Green and I talked about this yesterday. She's going to make out a schedule for the entire year and showing each council member what committees and boards will come up this year, not next week, but all year. And I would like for each one of you to do what you just said and reach out to people that you know that would actually serve and attend the meetings and be productive and make nominations. But they, they do have to go through Carissa Green just to do a background check. Um, and, uh, um, so tha- that's my appeal to the, the board. This is uncomfortable for the first day of a council meeting for, for new people, um, who really weren't prepared for this.
It was only put on because of the urgency.
Right.
Of needing a quorum, and they're going to lose a certification if they don't meet. That's the only reason, I think we did describe that, um, I think that got missed. Um, but, yeah, that's the only reason, and it's not uncommon, uh, as the new members will see that these boards will come up multiple times in order to fill. So, uh, if, many, many times, it'll be, I don't have somebody yet, someone didn't fill out their application, I talked to somebody, they didn't get back to me, move it to the next meeting. So, but part of it is if we don't keep the ball rolling, uh, it, it'll, it will die. So, and that's what we're trying to prevent here. Uh, and that's the only reason it's on. Normally, we would have waited to try and get the slate filled with more applications to pick from. But, uh, again, uh, the word I have is that, that if this doesn't meet soon, we're going to lose some type of certification.
Well, and just real quick, I'll say, George, my, my remarks were not criticism of staff for putting it on. It's just an observation of the issue that we're not getting applicants.
We're not taking it that way, and I just want to make sure.
We're not getting applicants.
I just want to make sure for the benefit of, uh, council member, or Kent too, that it's not about, uh, looking ill-prepared. This is going to be, uh, a, a problem pulling people, uh, onto some of these boards, and it happens, uh, like I say, they, uh, often will fill two or three of the spots, but we'll have two or three more we have to continue to look for.
Danny, Jake is ahead of you, but I see that you are eager to ask a question of...
Go, Danny.
No.
Go ahead, Danny Robbins.
Is, is it im... Is, is it imperative we, we vote on these three people and, George, uh, to keep that certification today, or?
Well, the other part is, this board also, uh, if anyone's doing any work on a historic structure, uh, they need this board to say yes or no. So I don't know right now, uh, without the building official in front of me, do we have anything? Okay, so there's something in February coming, uh, so that's the urgency, is you don't want to hold up someone who's trying to get something worked on.
I'm, I'm seeing you nod your head that you would like to see three people nominated.
We do have a meeting scheduled for later this month with the board, and with the current membership, we don't have enough for quorum, so it's imperative that we get some done.
Okay. Clay? Uh, Jake?
Uh, a couple of questions for, uh, staff. Number one, um, probably I'm president, and, but let's think out of the box. Can we go interim so we can not lose our certification, move forward with the building, give the, uh, council a chance to help Carissa find the right people? Because there's a, there's a lot of people that, I don't want to say... There's a lot of people that we can influence to come and do great work for the city that aren't elected, or the county. Uh, and number two, I noticed on the spreadsheet that, that, uh, the five that are terms are up in, uh, March of twenty-three. But then the ones that aren't up are also up in March twenty-three, so I'm, I'm a little confused and, and glad that my name wasn't on there. But I started making phone calls last night because I didn't want to be surprised with some people, uh, uh, next meeting. So, um, w- out of the box thinking, and when are the rest due?
This is a nomination for the remainder of the term that will expire in March. So it is basically an...
Good to know, so it is almost interim.
Yes.
You're, you're asking for two, three months' worth. Um, that, that makes total sense, so, so these folks will be gap fillers for two months. And, and move forward.
And we currently have, if Danny wants to stick with it, nomination of John Paul, but we...
Yeah, if we need him, yes.
Uh, Troy Kent?
Yeah, thank, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. So, couple of things that I, I found a little peculiar about this. And one is what, um, Councilman Johansson just mentioned, which was the, the term expiration, you know, when they were expiring their term. And I've never served on an elected body where I was the elected representative, and I came in, and I already, I have people on advisory boards that I don't, I don't get a say on. They're there for another year, or two years, or three months, whatever it is. I don't know that the electorate understands that, you know? I, I think they think, you know, when you get elected, you're going to have a say in who's going to serve on these advisory board positions. And I found that there are maybe a couple that that's not the case. Today's probably not the time for that healthy discussion, but I would love to see this elected body talk about that. And if it may be in our charter, and we got to wait for a charter, Charter Review Commission, but then again, it may be something we can clean up ourselves. For example, Councilman Reinhardt and I are here for two years. You might be here, you know, a lot more after that, but, you know, uh, a- and you, Chairman, you're here for two years, the rest of your term. Whereas the others are here for four years. So to have me nominate somebody that's going to be on for four years, so, you know, who knows what's going to happen in two years? But if someone new were sitting in this seat, their hands are tied, they don't get that, they don't get that opportunity. I'm, I'm not crazy about that. So I just, I just wanted to put that out there, and then I'll just tell you, you know, if they don't have to live in the district, I'll just let all of you know. Ormond Beach has a wildly successful Landmark Preservation Board, and there's a lot of people that take that seriously up there. And I, I believe Deland has a lot of people like that. I believe New Smyrna, in fact, I'm going to say Daytona, I'm going to say Holly Hill, everybody has it, have people. I just didn't know that I needed to go find somebody, and I'm just telling staff, if I had known, then I would have had that solved for today. So now I'm going to have it solved in two weeks, hopefully. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. We, for now, we all have a say on at least threes, these three people. There'll be two more that are needed. We need five. One of those could be yours. We have one right now with John Paul, um, from Danny Robbins, Matt Reinhardt.
Yeah, the other two remaining, a- and I agree with you, Troy. Um, I, I have one that I thought was a excellent fit. And when I read this, not knowing as well, uh, I reached out to him a couple nights ago. He has, or is in the process of filling that, that application out. I know, Carissa, you said that you didn't have the opportunity to be able to see that. So, um, he would be an excellent choice, I feel, but, uh, and I have no problem deferring mine until the next meeting to give him the opportunity to do that, because we did not know. Um, if that's okay, I just don't want to lose my choice on that by voting on these three. So I understand now that there are still two vacancies, uh, after that.
That's correct. Uh, Danny Robbins?
County Attorney, if you had something, I'll go after you.
County attorney, if you had something, I'll go after you.
Okay. With regards to your board appointments, Carissa, if you could just clarify for me. The council, back in 2009, I think, aligned terms. So when you have a new council, most of the boards are up in March.
Correct. About 90% of the boards are up March 31st.
So it sounds like, from hearing some of the discussion, I know, Carissa, I can work with her, we need to get you information on that. But that allowed the council a couple of months in the office to make the appointments. There'll be more information coming to you on that one. I appreciate what the concern was about this one, being in an organizational meeting. It sounds like this is just one that your staff was concerned about losing. There's a state certification, I believe.
It is. We need to have a certain amount of meetings.
But Mr. Johansson, as you said, that if you make any appointments today, you don't have to, but if you do, those terms would expire in March.
Okay. Okay. I, I would nominate, because I, I like him, Philip Golding, I think he would be good as the Eastside Chair appointment. So now we have two. Danny?
I was just going to follow back up. I already made my nomination, but Troy, just, there, there's provisions. If, if there is somebody on a board and you want to, and attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, there is a provision where we don't need a, a reason. You know, just go and make a motion and the body would vote on it, but you can pull anybody off a board at any time for whatever reason. You don't even have to give a reason. So I think that was part of what you were hitting on.
Okay. Michael Dyer?
Yes, sir. Each of your boards are created either by ordinance or resolution. Some of your boards, like Code Enforcement Board are required by statute. Others are just something you've created as a council to get their input on different issues. Your Personnel Board, for example, does have a removal for cause provision in its charter. That's unique. Most of your board members are going to be, serve at your pleasure at will. But regardless, I think by realigning the terms to follow up in March, it resolved much of that.
Okay.
Also, Mr. Kent, I know that you had a question about whether or not they have to be in your district. That also varies on boards, from board to board. And there's also other provisions, like the Code Enforcement Board, they have to, may meet certain criteria, affordable housing, they, six of the eight, I think, have to meet certain criteria. So some boards do have criteria. Some boards have to be on your district. Some boards may have to be Eastside or Westside for Mr. Johansson and Mr. Brower. Those all vary by board.
Right. And Ms. Green, is that right? Thank you. So that makes sense. What doesn't make sense is, is I don't know that I've received that packet of information with each of them. And I, I did, I did see a few things. And is my memory correct? That some, some board appointments, they go beyond, like not just three months, but much longer as far as their term for, for anybody. So then, you know, we'd have to come in and, and, and have a possibly uncomfortable situation where, you know, and maybe not, you know, I mean, I'm not afraid of it, but to, to come in and, and remove someone from a board and nominate someone new and have this elected body approve it, instead of being more seamless when a new council is elected, like that's whenever we're going to, that would be the trigger to say, okay, here we go. We're going to have new nominations for everybody. It's going to be for a, a two-year period because we're always on a, we're always on that cycle. You know, we're, we're always on that, that two-year cycle. Someone's up for election. And you could have people that want to do it, you know, over and over and over and over. Am I right? Did I, did I read, see that correctly? There are some people on these boards that the board continues much longer than just three months?
Most boards are for a two-year term, but there are some that are for a four-year term and a six-year term.
Right. And counsel, I'm just saying, that's problematic for me. Because I'm not getting an opportunity to appoint people that I know. And as, as our vice chair, you know, eloquently pointed out, you know, there's, there's a mechanism to make that happen. But like I said, I don't know that today is the appropriate time to have that discussion, but I think it's a discussion we probably should have.
And, and we will, as, as I stated earlier, discussing this with Carissa yesterday, she is going to have a schedule for every council member for the, for the rest of the year of appointments that we will need to make so that you can be prepared. It will tell you how long they will serve. And I think the reason this is on here, because there's a special, you're under the gun.
We are, yes.
And you need two or all three?
We need as many as we can get, just because we have had a hard time getting quorum on these. That's why we've actually lost some of the members is currently in the founding resolution. If they miss two meetings a year, then they're off.
And that, that really goes to Mr. Kent's question too. That people are removed because they don't participate, because they don't show up. So it's not like we're locked in forever. I think Danny probably nominated John Paul out of Deland because he, he thinks he would serve well. That was the case for me with Philip from, from Oak Hill. I think he's a good match for this board. Do we need to vote on each one of these separately, each nomination?
It's council's will. You could vote as a slate, or you could vote on each individually. I know council recently had been taking individual votes, but it's up to council on how you want to do it.
We have one more person that's been approved for consideration, Richard Sala. He could be nominated from District One, District Four. I know you want to wait for somebody. District Four wants to wait. So that just leaves District One.
I'm kind of in the same boat as Troy and Matt. I, I'd like to vet up people. I, you know, I'd like to maybe talk to Chris Kleidman. The, under Deland does, their historic areas vary. So if this is something that's not going to be a death nail to this committee, I'd like to wait at least two weeks before I nominate anybody. Because I, in my mind, I have a couple of people I think that might serve well on this. And, or I could probably find somebody because I know land is very active in the historic preservation area.
And I, I think that'll solve our problem and not have this become an issue again. If we know the schedule for the year and each of you can start reaching out to people because they are not responding to the webpage, Facebook, the way that we're advertising it. I mean, we need five people. It's taken a long time to get three. They happen to be three decent people. You just had a, a conference with Clay. Is there anything else we need to know?
We, we just want to make sure that we wouldn't need all three today. Obviously, we'd prefer that. But to, as long as one of them showed up and the remaining four board members showed up, we would have quorum for the meeting in January.
Okay. Danny Robbins?
Motion to approve, to select it.
Okay. There's a motion by Danny Robbins to approve John Paul and Philip Golding. Is there a second? Troy Kent?
I second the motion.
Motion by Robbins to approve, second by Troy Kent. Any other discussion? Danny? All right. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. All right. What time is it? One o'clock? Let's not break for lunch. Let's finish up. We have one public participation. We will have comments from the county manager, county attorney, and then an opportunity for any council member or final comment would be the last thing that we, that we do. Right now, we have one request to, to speak. John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, Beachside. With the federal government, we have several ancient elected officials in their 80s and 90s. I was surprised at the number of children that walked up for photographs. We have to establish a daycare center and it's the first time I've ever been in any city or county meeting with so many children. In other words, you guys are young, all right? You've been on public office and retired, but a lot of young kids. And I'm, I'm happy to see that. Secondly, the meeting at 10 o'clock and four o'clock, I know you guys discuss it among yourselves, but there's business people that have to be concerned because business hours are during the day. And at four o'clock is not during the day. When you start to do things, you open the meeting, the public participation doesn't start other than the fact that we talk. But business-wise, it doesn't start until five, six o'clock. That's after business hours. A lot of what we do requires business people. And you never discuss business people. You never discuss the fact that you're going to start at dinnertime. Many people can't make dinnertime. They have children, they have families, they can't make it. All those discussions weren't there. You kind of, to me, appeared to jump in without totally looking at it. So I'm a little bit concerned with it, especially since it's not a new idea. It's been going on for 40 years and it's never worked anywhere. So good luck. I know you can change it, but I just don't like scrambling things when you don't have to. And lastly, the City of Daytona Beach has a lot, and I mean a lot, of vacant property in its downtown. If you go, we have, I think, property that can put 10 parking garages in downtown. You guys have a very prominent piece of property that is right next to some rather huge development we have. I'm asking you to consider, we know that the courthouse wants to move off of City Island. We know they, the judges want a new building designed that is best for them. So it has to be done at some point. Secondly, we tore down a county building, okay? It's vacant land. There is a need for a parking garage for both of those buildings. And I'm suggesting in the lot that you own, which is basically the entire lot, you consider putting in five buildings. One for the county council, the county building, one for the courthouse, which would match the Foxman Building, one for condos, because that's the highest and best used on Beach Street, and a parking garage in the center, and a third building with either apartments, residential or commercial. Consider using that and the 13 million we get from FEMA. Thank you.
Thank you. There comes a discussion of anything that's not on the agenda that council members would like to discuss. But we'll start with closing comments from the county manager.
Well, yes, Mr. Chair, I just have one item. An immediate, a late meeting yesterday with some of our consultants working on disaster recovery brought to our attention a availability of a large amount of money through the CDGB program, specifically the CDGB DR program, which is money that can be used for infrastructure and also for affordable housing projects. Would I like to have the permission from the council, this will come back to you as a, as a full item, but in the interest of time, my understanding is, is a need for a letter out of my office requesting HUD to consider Vlucia County for a direct allocation of the money. In the past, the money's gone to the state and then the state uses it. We are large enough, and of course, we've proven it recently with several ARPA projects and other ways we've taken the money directly. So if the council has no issue, I will send a letter requesting that Vlucia County be considered for a direct allocation versus working to the state.
Danny Robbins, you want to make a motion to that effect?
I will make that motion, send the letter to the state.
You're a second?
Second.
And it's the HUD, because the letter's going to HUD.
Was the second by Jake?
By Matt Reinhardt.
Second by Matt. Any discussion? Thanks for bringing that up. Any opportunity to go after new money is, is a good opportunity. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero to write the letter to HUD.
That's all I have.
Michael Dyer?
Thank you. Congratulations. Each of you, look forward to working with you. My job is to be an honest broker for information. If there's something I can do better or definitely for you, please let me know. I'm here to help you. See you in two weeks.
Thank you. Don, I'm not picking on you. Every meeting, I get a roll call list and it rotates every meeting. So there's different names at the top. Today's order starts with Mr. Don Dempsey. If you have any closing remarks or-
No, it's been a great day and I'm looking forward to the next four years with you.
Brevity. Did you notice that twice today? I can't either. Jake Johansson?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I'm very fortunate to be here with this group of people. Thank you very much. Staff, I, I can see that, that on behalf of the council, at least this part of council, I apologize for some of the jerking around you're going to get in the next few months, but it'll, it'll all even out. One of the things I hope to do is, is not catch you by surprise at a council meeting. So feel free to counsel me in private when, when that happens. But I'm looking forward to working with staff and the citizens to move our county forward. And what a great, what a great discussion today. So thank you very much, council members and Mr. Chairman. And I look forward to seeing everybody in a couple of weeks.
Troy Kent?
Thank you, Chairman. Couple of brief comments and requests. The first one is Mr. Rechtewald. Thank you for the marathon day meeting with all the department directors. It was extremely beneficial for me. And, and just, you have an excellent team. So I just wanted to publicly say thank you for that. Also, Mr. Rechtewald, the, the charger here, it says for an iPhone, but can we get a charger that will, you know, this is one of, I don't know what it's called, but one of these funky little connectors, that one doesn't fit. Got plenty of power today, but I'm just thinking down in the future.
No, we'll match up.
Running low. Thank you.
New phones will match you up with the new Accord.
Thank you for that. And just two, two other things, possibly three. But I was a little surprised that at this organizational meeting, there wasn't anything, and staff knows about this. I talked to Mr. Dyer about this privately, but one-on-one. I was a little surprised at this meeting that there wasn't an agenda item for us to talk about how these meetings are run. It's sort of like, you know, well, this is how it is. But we're a new group that's going to be working together and we may want to change nothing at all. But then again, there may be some things that we want to talk about and discuss to help us be efficient and effective and get the work done for the people. So our county chair and our county manager set the agenda. If we want something on the agenda, we have to talk about it now and ask for it to be on a future agenda. And then, Mr. Dyer, is it one other council member that has to say, yes, I want it on the agenda? Or do we have to have a majority that say, we want it on the agenda?
Yes. Generally, what I've seen, the, what has happened in practice, and I think what's required under the charter is that you, the council, has the will, the majority. So if any individual council member wants an issue on the agenda or a presentation or a workshop, you can bring it up. Oftentimes during this time of the meeting, during council time, make a motion, get a second vote.
Right. So you have to have a majority. And I, and I get that. I get the thinking behind that of, listen, if you don't have a majority, why are we going to bring it up? Why are we even going to discuss it? But my thought process behind that is you might have some time to marinate on it or hear something as a presented agenda item that changes your mind from just sitting here going, yeah, I don't, I don't want to hear about that, forget it. And each of us represents over 100,000 people. It's a lot of people. And two of you represent over a half a million. It's a lot of people. So not to take anything away from our county manager, not to take anything away from our county chair, but I would like to have a discussion. So I'm, I'm going to make a motion that, I'm not going to say the next meeting because I think the next meeting agenda is probably pretty well written up. But how about the next one after that, which is February 7th, that we have a discussion about how- 7th, that we have a discussion about how, what our rules are for how our meetings are run. And we look at that, I know that Mr. Dyer gave me a notebook and in the notebook, I looked at the tab and I read everything that was there and I just, I'm trying to, my goal here is to make sure if any of us wants something on the agenda, we have a pretty easy path to get that done and also a way to help not only increase participation at our meetings, but make sure that they are efficient and effective. And this is, this is no criticism towards anybody, but like, as I read through our rules that we have at the meeting, you know, we have, we have people come up and speak for three minutes and that's wonderful. I'm very much used to that and that's something that should happen. But at the end of three minutes, our first two speakers continued on for, I don't know, 30 seconds or a minute afterwards. Well, you have 30 people lined up and doing that and that really makes a difference. So at my first meeting, I didn't want to call a point of order and say, their time is up. Isn't that the rule that we have? We've set amongst us that we have rules here and we're going to follow the rules and we're asking you to follow the rules. And then the second piece I read was, whenever somebody is talking, because every single person that spoke today, I wanted to say something. But looking, doing my homework and reading, it says, we're not going to have that back and forth banter. And there's a reason for that, because it slows down the work of the people. And that happened a few times this morning as well and I want us to get off on the right foot. So that's why I'm asking and I'm making a motion that we, that we have this on the agenda. It was the date, February 7th, I said, so that we can have a discussion about it and decide how, how we want to, we want to run things. But guess what? If I don't get a second and we don't get majority of us to say we want to talk about it, doesn't matter what I want to talk about. So that's my first one. So I'm going to make a motion and be quiet and see if someone seconds it.
Danny Robbins.
County attorney. Last go around, we adopted decorum rules. We may be able to save this for efficiencies if we still have that available. You put that out on email for us, maybe get it to all the new council. Give us time, Mr. Kent, if you don't mind, to review the decorum rules. If there's a specific topic that you, that doesn't jive, that you want to change, we'll go ahead and put that on, you know, we can go ahead and research or change it. I see what you're saying and I agree with you. We need to kind of stick to things, keep moving along, but we may have all this information already and we'll get it and I think they can get it to you.
And Jake, before I call on you, Mike, I think that, is it the next meeting? We have this on the agenda to talk about the rules of the, of the meetings.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to bring that up and it's, if council wishes for me to proceed differently, of course we will. In November 21, council had requested a workshop on meeting rules. Council has adopted over the last two years, substantially revised their meeting rules. In the past, we had pretty, very little by way of meeting rules in writing. You now have a pretty comprehensive set. The charter allows this council by two-thirds vote to amend those rules at any time. Most of your meeting rules are really up to you. You have a few fundamental things. Law requires public input, you know, meetings law, you have to honor that, but how long a member of the public speaks? Right now, you have three minutes. That could be altered, that's an example. By charter, your manager has the duty to put your agenda together. Your chair has the authority under the charter to supplement that agenda at an item. So the agenda preparation, how things get on is one area that is governed by your charter, but most of your meeting rules are really up to council and have discretion to revisit. At the January 17th meeting, we had invited back the speaker who's presented to the last council on your meeting rules as an overview. Really, that's something, it's a trainer that was recommended to us by the floor of League of Cities. I think it was well received last time. And after that discussion, council did have a discussion about meeting rules and that issue and that could be a forum to bring up some of those issues. Also, I understand the motion on the floor is to bring back an agenda item on February 7th, which we heard. We thought that council may benefit from having that discussion since the last.
The motion on the floor was to bring it back, February 7th, to discuss rules. We have that on the agenda. This could be part of it or if Mr. Kent wants to make it a completely different item, after we hear what the current, I think it would be beneficial to hear what the current rules are and then we can discuss, well, what do you want to change? There's things, like you just said, people talking in public comment. I tend to be very, if people are nervous when they come up here, it's our employers. You mentioned you want to do the work of the people. I think part of the work of the people is to hear from them when they bother to come. We just change the meetings to nighttime, we'll get more people. But if, if we want a, when that three-minute bell goes off, if, if you want me to say, you're done, or I can even cut them off, I would be opposed to that, but if that's the, if that's the everybody's opinion, we will do that. And yes, normally, we don't respond to people. I would like to see that changed. I know it takes more time, but again, it's the work of the people. If somebody comes in from the public to address us, I think there's times when they deserve a response as simple as, I'll contact you.
Right. And Chairman, I'll just, I'll just say and respond to that, since, you know, still on my time, but I'm asking, I'm asking a question about this. I get the whole, I don't want to be rude and cut you off. Well then, make it four minutes. Make it five minutes. Some people are going to continue to go. So what is our rule? And if we have rules that we're following and, and I'm going by what I heard from you right out of the gate was, Robert's Rules of Order are going to dictate this meeting. And we have rules that are clearly stated for our public. And please, public, don't misunderstand what I'm saying. I wanted to change the meeting times because I want you more actively participating in these meetings. But if the rule says three minutes, someone just continues to go on, then our rule really isn't three minutes. It's three minutes unless the chair wants to listen more to you about what you're going to say. And I'm not, and maybe this is a councilman Kent problem, because I'm just not used to that. I'm not used to, that's how a meeting is run. And that's why, instead of having this discussion right now, I was saying, let's put this on an agenda and talk about it, because I read all of the rules. I'm prepared to talk about them point by point now, but that's, I don't think staff is. And I want to do that because it wasn't on the agenda today. I thought it would have been on the agenda and my hope by having this discussion is that next year, or in two years, whenever there's a new council, that it's on the organizational meeting agenda. They say, hey, you know what? This is important because we want to run an efficient council, council, council meeting here. We want everybody to be heard. So I'm, I want to tell you, I was against, we had five minutes in Ormond and we went down to three and I was, look at the public record, I think I was against it. Come and talk all you want, tell me what you want, but you have those individuals that if you give them 12 minutes to talk, they're going to talk 12 minutes and when the buzzer goes off, they keep going. We had two people today, the buzzer, ding, they kept talking. Ding, they kept talking. Ding, the third one, and I'm like, am I really at my first meeting going to call a point of order with my wife and son and family sitting out here saying, hello? Are we going to stop them from talking? So that's my point in having this discussion, but I didn't know this was on this January 17th meeting, so there's no reason for me to ask for it for February 7th. So I'll gladly withdraw the motion because it sounds like there's going to, we're going to have discussion about it on January 17th.
Mr. Chair, only thing, I would say, I mean, I think the presentation on the 17th was just kind of give an overview of where you are now. What I'm hearing from you, Mr. Kent, is you may want to discuss changes. So I could see you actually having both, if you want to use that February 7th as a discussion, once you've had the chance to absorb it, what would you like to change? And we can bring back a changed ordinance or...
Great. And I see staff shaking their head and I'm saying, yes, but I still, my point is, I still need a second and then I still need majority to say, yes, we're going to talk about that.
I'll second you, Troy.
Thank you.
And can we get those, just to add, can we make sure we get those for us and that way we have our duck.
Sure, I'll give it to you today.
Okay, so...
So what's the speaking list for?
Hold on one second, let's, what's the what?
What's the speaking list for?
Yeah, it's, that's what I was just going to say. When, if you put your name up there, I will call on you in the order that it came. So I would just ask that each person be, can, can everybody see on their monitor who's up? Just be respectful of the person before you, Jake.
Forgot what I was going to say. I second the motion and my comments are that everybody has an opportunity to change, to change the rules. We, in every place I've been, including here, the rules get reviewed yearly. So the rules are coming as an overview on the 13th. I think February 7th is a good time to change it. We talked earlier in our opening statements, or at least I did, about the people's time. That, that leads to Mr. Kent's conversation about, about the rules. The banter back and forth, I've been in a city that does that. For those of us that aren't politicians, we're politicians now and we have some obligation to speak, apparently. So if, if we have 20 people that come up here and each one of us give them three minutes of our time to the three minutes of their time, it's going to take forever. So, so the banter has its pluses and it has its minuses. So, so think about that when we review the rules. But I'm, I'm with Mr. Kent on this. I really think that we need to look at the rules, look at the people's time, and look how we manage our agenda. We had probably 30 to 35, I couldn't count them, public safety people in this, in this room waiting for Joe to get affirmed and some of them had to leave because, well, we all talked too long. So I think things like that, we didn't know the first event with the times and the dates would take so long, but we have to foresee some of that. The other thing that I'd like to see when we, when we go through it is consent versus regular agenda items. If it's on consent, it ought to be out of consent and if it ought to be on the regular, we ought to pull it before this thinking meeting, because there's a lot of people waiting. Having said that, I second the February 7th review and approval of whatever rules we have.
Don Dempsey.
Yeah, just, it's my first day on the job, so I don't know what to complain about and what not to complain about yet, because I'm green and I think most of us are green. Just having practiced law for 32 years and seeing people representing themselves and talking in front of judges and, I mean, it's, it's difficult to get all your thoughts across within a three-minute window. So I think limiting people to three minutes and then, nigh, you're done, is unfair. I mean, just like Jeff said, I talk briefly, bravely. Others have made their speeches very long-winded and so if we're going to do that to the public, maybe we should do that to ourselves and keep us under the same time constraints as we're asking the public to do. I would just like to wait and get a couple of months under our belt. I mean, Jeff, I think it's very courteous of you to let the people go for an extra 30 seconds so they can complete their thought. I, I've had that happen to me in trial, where the judges have limited you to a certain amount of time and I'm a trained speaker and it's hard for me to make sure that all my points get across before the buzzer goes off. So to ask the public who are laypeople, who are probably scared to death half the time, you know, speaking to us, and then make sure that they get all their points across at an exact time period, I think is unfair. So I think it's, I think it's very professional and courteous of you to allow these people, even today, to go over, as long as it doesn't get out of hand. And I just haven't experienced anything today that I would say is out of hand, so I would just, maybe we wait a couple of months, see how these meetings go, see if it gets out of hand. I mean, we're fixing to be done at 1:20. I was here, that's the year four, so they could have gone over. But I would just say, if we could just maybe get hindsight of some experience and then, I mean, I don't mind talking about it next week, that's fine, but I can tell you, I'm, I think it's probably premature to have an intelligent discussion about it so we can experience itself.
Danny Robbins.
Thank you, Chair. No, we have a motion on the floor in a second, but real quick, Don, the reason some of these were put in place is, like anything and it happens with all of us, give an inch, we take a mile. Sometimes this opens up Pandora's box and it does get abused, especially in the heat of the moment, when there gets contentious issues. We've been here for, for hours and hours of meetings that should have been three hours, but they're here for nine or 10 because of some of these issues. So I agree with Mr. Kent, Mr. Johansson, I think everybody up here, you know, let's, let's talk about this maybe here and maybe another couple of weeks, we'll go ahead and vote on this and, and just see where, see where it goes. But you'll see very quickly that, that, and you know, this isn't your first rodeo, but it's, it's very important that if we do have those rules, we got to go by them because they will get abused and they have been abused.
Troy Kent.
Thank you, Chairman, and I appreciate the thoughtful insightfulness from everybody that spoke. With that being said, Mr. Dempsey, I wholeheartedly disagree with just about everything you said. And I mean that in no disrespect. I just, I wholeheartedly disagree with it and I'm going to tell you why. It is, for four of us up here, it is our first day on the job. For whatever reason, I feel like we need to move now. You're here for a four-year term. I'm here for two. Mr. Reinhart's here for two. Government as a whole is not known to move expeditiously. In fact, it's known to move sometimes at a turtle's, snail's pace. And if we have rules, we either follow them or we don't. And if we don't, then why do we have rules? And if you want to give people three and a half minutes, I'm fine with that. If you want to give people five minutes, I'm fine with that. But at what point do you say, we have given you an opportunity to speak, you came and you spoke, and you are not following our rules? Because as Mr. Robbins has said, this can go on and on and on. And I was going by the rules that I read, was that there would be no back and forth banter. And I think Mr. Johansson mentioned it, because, you know, you mentioned, some of us have spoken a lot more than others. I said it earlier, I wanted to respond to every single person that came here, but if all seven of us do that, we're not going to get the work done. And, you know, we, we would never get out of here at 1:30, maybe at 1:30 a.m., if we started at 10 a.m. But that is why, I'm just saying, and I, and I appreciate what the Chair was doing. I think what he was doing was a very kind thing. And I think I was kind by not calling a point of order on my first meeting, the first 10 minutes of being in here. I didn't want to start out on that foot, but why do we have rules if we're not following them? So we have a motion in a second.
Okay, I appreciate everybody's thoughts on this. I think it shows that we do need to discuss it. I think that part of what we're hearing is that we, we just voted today to have meetings at night. Probably nobody wants to be here until 2 a.m. So we do need to have rules. I will, and I'm going to clarify the motion in just a second, but I will probably argue strenuously that when we're talking to the public, when the public takes time to come here, I said earlier, they're our employer. I can't imagine telling your employer, we're done, be quiet, I want, I need to go about my business. Our business is their business and they deserve to be heard. Yeah, we can't let everybody speak for, for 15 minutes. If we have a three-minute time limit in the past, and you can change this if, on February 7th, if somebody goes over a few seconds, you can usually tell, they're trying to wind up, they're nervous, they didn't get it in. I don't want to embarrass them. I'll let them go for a few seconds. If somebody's, you can tell, they're just going to go until you haul them off, then you stop them and take them out. That's my personal feeling, but we are a deliberative body and the rules are ma- That's my personal feeling, but we are a deliberative body, and the rules are made by the majority. And so, um, you'll have the ability to set those, change any rules that you hear on February 17th. So my question to make sure we get this motion and second correctly, is it, um, is to Mr. Kent. You want this to be a completely separate item than the item that's on the agenda to discuss the rules that we have now? Because we could go in after that and change any of them, or have it completely separate.
I, I haven't seen the agenda item on the 17th, have you?
Yes.
Has that been sent out to us already?
It was just built yesterday.
No, it, there's no, I mean, he's heard about it, but the, the agenda item has not been released. Um, it's the same presentation as November 21. But it's not finalized, no, no.
Okay, because I, I mean, I was gonna say, gosh, if, if you're getting agenda item information before the rest of us, that's a problem. But, I haven't seen it, so I, I, I can't answer that because I haven't seen it. I, I thought that at today's organizational meeting, we would go over the rules that govern this body. And if there were any changes that any of us wanted to bring up, if, if there were people in agreement, other council members in agreement, we, we would go that route. That didn't happen, so that's why I'm requesting that we have one. I didn't ask for the 17th, because I, I was trying to not be strong-arming staff. I wanted to give them a little more time, I thought they probably already had the agenda set up for the 17th. And for me to do this, I'm giving them homework at the 11th hour, and, and that doesn't feel good. And, and the last thing I'll, I'll say is, and, and, you know, I dislike repeating myself, but I'm gonna say it again. If we want to give people four minutes, or five minutes, or 20 minutes, if we as an elected body agree to that, we, we agree to it. But most people can get their thought across in three minutes. I've seen it, we went from five to three, and I've seen it happen. And, that's, that's a, that's a you problem if you don't want to tell people to follow our rules. If you don't want to tell people in a very nice way, dinger goes off, thank you very much for your comment, have a nice day. That sounds nice. Thank you for following our rules, your time is up. There's an opportunity at the end of the meeting where you can speak some more, but thank you very much, we appreciate your thoughts, thank you. Otherwise, it just continues to go on, and, and I'm, I'm beating a dead horse. So, hopefully, we'll vote in the affirm, affirm this vote, and we'll, we'll talk about it on the 7th.
Okay, so, your motion is February 7th?
Yes, because I don't know what's on the 17th, and I don't wanna.
That's fine.
Push that down staff's throat.
Just want every council member to know what we're voting on. Before I call for the vote, Jake Johansson.
Please call the question, we've heard the same thing from a couple people over and over again.
Okay, call the question, uh, requires that I ask if anybody else wants to, uh, speak on the issue. If nobody does, Don Dempsey.
I just want to make sure, we're just voting on whether we're gonna discuss this later on, and then.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm open for discussion, that's fine, may not agree with everything y'all are saying, but I'm open to this.
Okay. Okay, no other discussion, no other question, the motion on the table is to discuss the, the rules on February 7th, uh, seconded by Danny Robbins, motion was by Troy Kent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
Okay. Chairman, can I continue?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. So, the, the second to last thing I had to discuss with the council was, and I mentioned it to you earlier, we have a long way to go and a short time to get there. So, I'm, I'm hitting the ground running, I want to get started right now, I think that this is low-hanging fruit and something we can talk about. I, um, would like, for us, on either February 7th, or February 21st, to have a, a discussion item where we can discuss dog-friendly areas in the different parts of the beach that I mentioned earlier this morning. And I will now make a motion, that, on either February 7th or February 21st, we ask staff to bring back an, an item where we can discuss the opportunities of bringing a dog, dog-friendly areas, plural, to our beaches.
Pick a date, so that we know exactly what we're.
Uh, Mr. Reckonwald, is the 7th good for you on this? Or is that, is that too tight for you? The reason I ask that is, I was told, I was told when I had my meeting with everybody that there's, this information is on the shelf, this, the counties talked about this several times in the past, they just haven't gotten the football across the goal line.
My only hesitation, you're correct, we have the stuff, we could do it on the 7th. My only hesitation, uh, right, the second is with the changing of the, um, schedule, uh, we were already talking about how we would realign some of the items, um, to meet with, um, uh, the, the new hybrid schedule, so.
I tell you what, I would love, I would, I would love with my motion, I'll just say the 21st, because that's gonna be an afternoon meeting, starting at 4 p.m.
Yeah.
And it will really open it up, an opportunity for.
I think that works great.
Come in and talk to us.
So we'll do it that way.
Thank you. Okay, the motion on the floor is to talk about dog-friendly areas of the beach, February 21st, is there a second? Is there a second?
I will make the second to talk about dog-friendly areas on the beach, I think it's important discussion, it came up, it was voted down, but I think it should come back up again indeed, and discuss it.
I just wanted to discuss, I didn't want this thing. I needed to make a second, nobody was going to.
That's fine.
All in favor?
Um, actually, sorry, I'm sorry, point of order, there's more people that want to talk before we, before we do that.
Go ahead, Mr. Kent.
Yeah, so, I, I, that perplexes me. Um, this was just so that we can have it on the agenda, not that it's going to happen, but just so that we can discuss it. And, um, you know, I don't, I don't know how, how involved everybody is with the beach and how often you go there, but I can tell you, I am there often. And I have had so many different constituents talk about this issue with me. And, and this, of course, goes back to why I wanted to have what we just voted on, that's going to come before us on the 7th, which is, if you have an idea, and you want to bring it up, I mean, if, if the Chair wouldn't have passed the gavel, which by the way, thank you very much. If the Chair wouldn't have done that, you know, we'd have sat here and it would have died for lack of a second, and guess what, we're not even gonna discuss dogs on the beach. And I just, I just, it blows my mind a little bit, so.
And what I was gonna do, Mr. Kent, is, um, so we don't get ahead of ourselves, I think a lot of these questions that we're coming up with, these issues have, this isn't the first time that a lot of these have happened. Um, but what I would like to do is, before we, uh, start, uh, possibly putting on, is knowing exactly the history, because it's gonna answer a lot of questions and get a lot of the nonsense out of the way, so we can be that efficient, and so we can be that effective, when that topic does come back, I'm gonna support you on it. But what I also want to see is, um, the historical on this, the minutes, and, and maybe the discussions are provided on some of these topics that are gonna come back. Because if, if not.
We certainly will give that as background.
Right. Prior discussion, that's all I was gonna say, is.
We have.
Get us this stuff, and it may, it may eliminate, uh, because we're going into a bad time. The only reason I didn't second it, okay, the beach is a disaster right now, there's hazards, uh, we can't even forecast the weather in the state of Florida. But, uh, between the economic decline, there's gonna be a, a lot of money goes, and I'm a dog guy, just like you, just like everybody up here. Um, but there's, there's a lot of history with this that have, has, uh, that we've went over, and plus, we have a lot of, uh, curveballs. But, that's all I have, I'll support it if, if.
And, and Mr. Robbins, if I, if I can, I, I would just say, that, of, of course, staff's gonna give all of that background information when it's on the agenda. But if we don't even agree to put it on the agenda, then none of us get it, and there's a bunch of new faces here, we don't get a bite at that apple, we don't get that opportunity. And the beach is in a bad shape right now, but we know what happens every summer with, you know, no waves and, and sand, and sand replenishment. And if we don't talk about it now, we're gonna be next December, next January, and we've not discussed it and nothing's happened, so that was why I was perplexed.
Yep, I get it, uh, I think we all, I think we all do. Uh, Jake.
Well, thank you.
Sorry.
We talked earlier about rules. And one of the first things I did as an elected official was seconded a motion without putting my name on the request to speak. So, Mr. Kent clarified that, we all agreed to press the request to speak. So I pressed the request to speak, Danny Robbins' name was up before me, so I didn't have a chance to speak. Then Mr. Kent came back, and he was perplexed. And then Chairman Brower passed the gavel, both assuming that the motion wouldn't get seconded when I was still in the hopper to speak. So.
Wasn't on my screen.
Well, I'm sorry, it was on his screen, just after you handed the gavel. So here, here's the thing, is I don't want for you all here to presuppose anything that I may or may not do, until I do or do not do it. And I, I, I suspect that we don't want to do that for anybody else. You were perplexed that it wasn't gonna get seconded, I was ready to second it. Um, and, and the Chairman took care of that when he passed the gavel. But, but, and, and then the Chairman said, because I knew it would fail for lack of a second, my name was still up there. What I'm getting at is, let's not presuppose till all the cards are played, please. I was gonna second it, you are correct, it's just a discussion, we can, we can approve or not approve it when we hear it. So, let's not presuppose, and let's let things play out. And it's very important to me that we follow the rules, if we're gonna use this thinking request to speak button, let's use it. And I'm done, so I think Don's up next. Don Dempsey.
Yeah, I was, uh, yeah, I, I go along with what Jake's saying, um, yeah, I would have backed up at any dis, that's not, I wasn't, I'm a dog, I got three German Shepherds and a Corgi. And the reason I'm half asleep all the time is because two of those Shepherds sleep in my bed with me and my wife, and I can't ever get any legroom to stretch out and go to sleep, so. No, you're talking to a big fan of dogs as well, and, um, but yeah, I just, uh, when, when Jeff handed the gavel, I've never seen, again, this is my first day on the job, I never saw, I thought Jeff was resigning from his position, because he's like, I don't want this no more, Danny. But, um, yeah, I agree, I guess my question is procedurally, because I don't have a, when we have an idea, I've got a bucket list of things that I want to get done during my term as well. Obviously Troy has his bucket list, and we all do. But how do we approach this? Do we bring it up for the first time here, in, in form, or do we just approach staff and say, hey, wait a minute, I got a couple things I want to raise, uh, on my bucket list? Do I approach that first through staff and see if this has been raised up by Paul and shot down before? Or do I just bring it up the first time here in front of everybody, and then we talk about whether this has even been dealt with, or have a full-blown discussion with everybody's time taken up? And, and I guess that's why I was still a little bit, uh, unclear on how this, how our bucket lists are supposed to be approached.
Yeah, and I think the answer to your question is yes.
Yeah.
You can, you can bring it up to staff, typically, um, council members during this time, when, and closing comments, uh, from council members, they will do what Troy Kent just did, and ask for an item to go on a future agenda, or to even be discussed right now. Michael Dyer, George, do you have anything to add to that?
And, no, I, I agree, um, and when you have the, uh, meetings with staff, your agenda one-on-ones, or any other meeting, uh, any of you can ask for information. We will put it together for you, uh, our general rule is, has been in our process, is, you know, what we give to one, we give to all, uh, so one council member's not privy to the information, aren't. But there may be issues that you have an interest in, that you want to bring up to staff, and get some information together or background, but then at a meeting like this, you, uh, the agenda is within the control of the majority here in the council. So, you can add something if you, if you wish.
I mean, has, has the dog, in the, I mean, obviously I'm in favor, I mean, I, I can't commit, I won't commit, but I'm just saying, it sounds appealing, I just didn't know if there's already been studies done on it, or votes, or.
Council head, the prior council had taken this up, and your staff had done presentations, and by recall, even presented some options that could be available to introduce it. Um, it did not pass at that time, but I think your staff has information on this subject they can fall back to, and if you want additional information or options, currently, certainly could develop those.
Is that something y'all could provide to us before this, so that we have the benefit?
Sure. Yeah, we, we'll get that out. It'll be an agenda. Good. Troy Kent.
So, staff, my, my two issues, and, and we'll put the, the dog one on the back burner right now. But the importance of, that this organizational meeting of having our rules discussion, because as Councilman Dempsey just said, you know, he, he wasn't sure. How do you get something on the agenda? And that's why I'm saying we need to talk about our rules, because unless you're George Reckonwald, or unless you're the county chair, you're not getting something on the agenda unless you bring it up here. And then, and then majority of us say, you know what, we want to talk about what you want to talk about. And, and I don't know how I feel about that, because like I said, each of us represents over 100,000 constituents. Two of the gentlemen up here represent over a half a million. And, um, you know, maybe Jake should be able to put things on the agenda. But this is, and, and I apologize, Councilman Johansson, shouldn't use first names, Councilman Johansson. Again, it's in our rules when you go through it and read it, but.
I've been called for it.
Um, you know, uh, staff, I just bring that up because I, I think it's a, it's an important thing that, that we should implement in, in the, in the future. And as far as the, the dog issue goes, it has been, in my opinion, it has been an epic failure, time after time when it's been brought up. But nobody's brought up the way I want to talk about it, nobody's brought up my idea of every beachside community having a football field-sized area. Nobody's talked about having the proper signage and the garbage bags and the garbage cans, and having a lifeguard stationed at, ne- next to each and every one of those. No one has talked about that, and that's what I wanted to do. But in order to do that, I've got to get approval from everybody up here, that you even want to discuss it. And that's my concern, is that I think each of, each of you come with extremely important things that this county needs to do, the work for our people. So I brought this one up because, to me, this is low-hanging fruit. They have the information i- in their archives, they can show it to us why it was shot down, but we get a bite at the apple. We get an opportunity, and that's impactful, and that's important, and that's why I brought it up.
Jake Johansson.
The motion on the floor is to discuss dogs on the beach. The second is dogs on the beach. Everything else we talked about is extremely important, but it's not germane to the motion. So, let's, people's time, let's stick with the motion, have the discussion on the dogs on the beach, it's just to put something on the agenda and move on.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Troy Kent to discuss, uh, dogs on the beach, February 21st. We have a second by Robbins, uh, initially, now seconded again by Jake. And before I call for the vote, Jake, I just, I just want to make sure you understand when, and Don, because you both brought it up. When I asked for a second on Troy's motion, there was silence, I asked again, is there a second?
And. So, so you want us, when you ask for a second, the, the list is foregone, and we just chime in?
No.
Because we are, because whether you saw it or not, Danny's name was ahead of mine, so I deferred to the person in the top of the list.
Now, when I, when I asked for a second, and then asked for another second, there was nobody on my screen, otherwise I wouldn't have.
Okay, there was, there was two on mine, so it might have just been a glitch. I'm, I'm going to, when you ask a second time, I'm gonna assume that you don't see what I see, and I'll chime in.
Okay.
I appreciate the clarification.
I would not have relinquished the, uh, the gavel.
Got it.
If, uh, I just, to me, I think that's an important item that we should discuss, we discussed it with the last council, it failed, I'm glad to see it come back. So I did want to, uh, I didn't, I, I at least wanted it seconded to discuss it. Um, if I see your name on there, like I see Troy Kent's name on there right now, I, I guarantee I will call on you and give you the opportunity to make your voice heard, Troy Kent.
Yes, I just wanted to say, uh, Councilman Johansson, when the Chairman passed the gavel, it was a glitch on mine also, because there was no name there. I didn't see one either, so I think that's why he passed it, but.
Copy.
Okay, um, the motion on the floor is to discuss, uh, dog-friendly beach, uh, beaches on February 21st, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? You got it on the agenda. You got it on the agenda.
Thank you very much, Council, I certainly appreciate that, and, last but not least, I just wanted to say, I'm super excited for the work we are about to get into, I believe that we can be extremely impactful and beneficial for our residents, again, I wanna thank the residents of District Four for entrusting me with allowing the opportunity to sit in this rented chair, because that's exactly what it is, it's a, it's a rented chair, and, and with that, I'll just say, everybody have a great afternoon, thank you.
Pat Reinhardt.
Forgot what I was gonna say. Thank you again, I'm going to take a page out of Mr. Dempsey's playbook, and, and make it very quick, I'm good.
Danny Robbins. I'm good. Since David Santiago's not here, I'll follow the lead of, of Mr. Reinhardt, Mr. Robbins, I think I'm good, I just wanna, again, say welcome to everybody on the council, look forward to a year, it's obviously gonna be lively, as it should be, and, hopefully, it will remain respectful, and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Did you second that? Did everybody rush to second it? Motion to adjourn...
Danny motioned, and...
By Danny. Matt Reinhardt.
Second.
You have a second. And... This meeting is over, thank you.